On Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Thursday, April 8th at 9:00 a.m. and Tuesday, April 13th at 9:00 a.m. The meeting can also be viewed on Metro Cable's 14's YouTube channel. A DVD can be checked out from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the City Clerk's Department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Could we go ahead and have my counterpart Vice Mayor Dalton Terry do the Pledge of Allegiance? I sent everyone to stand for it.
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And that's probably the first time I have not been on mute for a pledge since this whole pandemic began.
All right.
Oh, looky there.
Hey, Ami. Hey, all right. All right, can I call on Michael Dak from the United States Methodist Church of Christ for invocation? Do you want to move him to the window? Awesome. Michael, go ahead.
Thank you. And good afternoon and thanks once again for the invitation to members of all faith communities to offer an opening prayer for the city council. I'm Michael Dak, I live in Lincoln Village and I'm a retired pastor in the United Church of Christ. So now I invite you to be with me in prayer. Creator and sustainer of life, we are in the first weeks of spring, the season of new life and growth, the season of hope for an end to the pandemic and return to a more normal flow of life, work, education, and recreation. This is a season, the season is also a time of important celebrations for many people of faith. Over the past week, Jewish people observed the Passover, a holiday that celebrates freedom from bondage for Jews of long ago and the promise of God's presence and blessings to come. Yesterday, many Christians observed Easter, a holiday that celebrates the resurrection of Jesus Christ and the promise of new life for all of God's children. One week from tomorrow, Muslim people will begin the month-long observance of Ramadan, a time of fasting, spiritual reflection, and charity. These holy days are set aside from the normal routines of life as times for believers to open themselves to God's presence, blessing, and guidance. As believers or non-believers, I pray that we all can embrace many of these values that seek to build connections between neighbors and strengthen the whole community. I pray for this city in which we live, our state and our nation. I pray for our elected and volunteer leaders and members of the community. God of wisdom and compassion, guide and encourage our leaders. Help us as citizens and leaders work together to strengthen our community, to be more responsive to people's needs, and help us to trust that your power for good is at work in us and that together we can make our world a better place. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Michael. All right, presentations. We are blessed to have our Congressman Ami Barra. He'll be giving a presentation regarding the American Rescue Plan of Action 2021 and all the millions and millions of dollars he brought to Rancho Cordova. So thank God for him. All right, and I say I'll give it off to Ami Barra.
Garrett, thanks for that generous introduction and let me also congratulate Councilmember Polpati on joining the council and look forward to working with you. So this exciting time.
Thank you.
I understand another council member has a birthday coming up shortly. Is that Linda?
Linda's 23 years old. 23.
Well, happy birthday, Linda. Yeah, I'll try to keep my comments short because I know you have a lot to get through and certainly we'll try to answer any questions that the council may have. 2020 was a rough year for all of us. Certainly when you talk to the small business owners, the families that just were trying to get through this pandemic, the empathy I have for families with school-aged children as well who may have been trying to work and teach them remotely and just the challenges that we as a community and country and world for that matter really have gone through. And when I started chatting with all of you as our local and regional leaders, going back to May, you talked about the real impact, the pandemic and the loss of tax revenue and shuttering of businesses we're having on your ability to care for the folks that you work for, the folks that you elected, the folks that I work for. And going back to May, we really did, we heard what you said and we started to put together the Heroes Act to really get resources directly to the cities. And while I wish we had gotten the Heroes Act passed last summer because it also had a lot of funding to try to get our kids back in school, at least get the schools prepared to get vaccine distribution development. We did get the American Rescue Plan, which has a lot of those elements and we didn't have vaccines back last May, but we now have three wonderful vaccines that are all showing to be very safe, very effective at preventing illness from COVID-19. And I think we're seeing the ramifications of that. I'm glad that nationwide, we're now at about 3 million or maybe even over 3 million vaccinations a day and it looks like things are ramping up here. So when we started to write the legislation for the American Rescue Plan, it wasn't lost on me that all of you were still grappling with that lost revenue here in places like Rancho Cordova. And the care spending didn't get to the cities, went to the state, city of Sacramento being a larger city got some funding and the county got funding, but we really were pushing that we've got to get these spendings directly to the cities because you're the ones closest to the folks that are being impacted by this and you will best know how to utilize these funds. So that was a major piece of it. Another piece of the legislation was getting vaccinations and the public health workforce that could get the shots in arms as well as, again, trying to push that work as closely with the cities and communities as possible. And then the third piece, which I touched on, was we all want to get our kids back in school. I mean, this has been a tough year that will be hard to make up, but giving the resources out to the school districts in this case Folsom-Cordoba to really both get our kids back in the classroom, but do it in a safe way, do it in a way that protects our kids, but also our teachers, our staff, and the families. So I've got a couple slides and I don't know Stacy, you can, it might be easiest to see if we could just take a quick view through those three slides if you can share those.
We're pulling them up right now.
Great, fantastic. When you get older, you've got to put your reading glasses on unfortunately. I noticed Linda doesn't have to, so that means I'm older than Linda is, so we can go to the next slide. So when we think about Rancho Cordova's share of this, and I don't want to give an exact amount because we're still working with Treasury to get a sense, but it will be in that $15.8 million range, which I think is really significant. And when we think about how you can use these funds, obviously the intent was looking at COVID-19-related impacts and the negative economic impacts. So you're looking at businesses and others that were impacted by this. You can use it for some of those frontline workers that are still exposing themselves and putting themselves at risk during this public health emergency. Obviously, a big intent when we talked to you last year was just the revenue that was lost by this pandemic and we'll work with you as those formulas come out, but really again, kind of looking at the difference in revenue from your most recent fiscal year, comparing that to the year prior to the pandemic. You can also, part of the intent with this spending is not just to think about where we are today, but also to think about where can we go? And in that sense, you can use this in investments in water, sewer, broadband, because again, what the pandemic's shown us is how reliant we are. Obviously, our kids having to go to school virtually, but also telehealth, telemedicine, and the connectivity here. But you could also look at private nonprofits that are out there or special districts and consider partnering with them and transferring some of those funds to a lot of those nonprofits that really helped us get through this, but then again, will help us get to the recovery. We can go to the next slide. The one exclusion that we wrote into this is that the intent here wasn't to make up for pension shortfall. I know that's not the case with Rancho Cordova. You've always been very fiscally sound in terms of managing your budget and so forth, but the relief funds are not intended to be transferred to make a deposit into pension funds. The timing of this first funds, 50% of the funds are to be sent no later than 60 days of the bill signing. And the bill was passed the House Senate and was signed by President Biden on March 11th. And then the remaining 50% will be sent no later than 12 months after the first payment. And the funds are available until December 31st, 2024. So again, there's some flexibility in that design to help as you start to plan this fiscal year and also plan into the future. Next slide. As I mentioned, another big part of this was again, really safely reopening our schools. And the estimated funding for Folsom-Cordoba is in that $26 million range. So that should help, again, a lot of our schools and infrastructure are needed in terms of upgrading, better ventilation, et cetera, but also helping keep our kids safe today, but then also going forward. I also think if there are lessons learned in terms of virtual learning, online tools, et cetera, perhaps there's some funding that can help us continue some of the potentially positive things. We also included funds for, obviously, a lot of folks who are still struggling to pay their rent and so forth, so additional funding for rental housing assistance, but also recognition that there are a lot of landlords that you've also got to provide some of that funding for the small mom and pop landlords as well. With regards to the healthcare, again, we want to get shots in arms, we want to get people vaccinated. We also have put a lot of funding in there to work with community health centers, to work with retail pharmacies, particularly to get to those harder-to-reach communities. So there was a convenience and location where people can get their vaccinations. And then, you know, small businesses were particularly hit hard by the pandemic. We know that, you've seen your businesses in Rancho Cordova. The paycheck protection program certainly helped many of these businesses get through, but we want to particularly focus on the very small businesses, the restaurant industry. And there's some grants in there. We've expanded the EIDL advanced grants through the Small Business Administration and then also recognize this hasn't been easy to navigate. So the SBA Community Navigator Pilot Program will hopefully be able to work directly with small businesses, with chambers and others, to really try to help them get those resources necessary. So yeah, I think that's the last slide. And I think there's a real opportunity for us, there does seem to be a light at the end of the tunnel where we could use these funds and my office and I are ready to work with you as you start to think through what this looks like and how we both defeat the pandemic, but then also set us up for better days ahead and help those families, businesses, and others that were hit very hard by the pandemic to recover. Additionally, there are a few other areas, we're starting to go into the appropriation season, so I think there's opportunities where we might be able to work on some specific projects that relate to Rancho Cordova. We're about to start writing the Surface Transportation Reauthorization Bill, so I think this is an opportunity as well to look at some of the transportation projects that I know Rancho has been working on and if we can get the ability to get some funding to help lay out that infrastructure. And then the big one is the Jobs and Recovery Act that President Biden outlined last week. We don't know what the final shape of that bill will take. Our hope is to make this a bipartisan bill and it's something that's good for every district across this country. And he's set an ambitious timeline for us to try to write the bill by July 4th. We're going to try for that, but I think there's going to be plenty of opportunities in there as well as we start to write this bill, to think about where we want to be as a community, not just today, but five, 10, 25 years from now. Because if we do this bill correctly, it could be much like the interstate highway system that President Eisenhower did in the 50s and other big infrastructure projects like that, that can really set us up to be very competitive and create millions of jobs and put us back to work. So I'll stop with that and I'm happy to take any questions from the council members if you have them. There's still more to come and our office is going to work very closely with you. And I'm happy if there are no questions because I may not be able to answer them, in which case, Linda, I see your hand up.
Okay. So just a thank you actually for working on our behalf, but also there was a comment made on the news today about creating a more accurate definition of infrastructure. And we have colleagues in this area for whom the distribution of broadband is really an issue. And everything that can be done to help that particular set of infrastructure to grow is important. And you can tell it's important because even with the, I heard about it from the Department of Agriculture two years ago, the need to distribute broadband equitably, we've seen it with our kids this past year in education and inability to connect to the internet or to do Zoom calls. And the other thing I am personally interested in, I told Matt a couple of months ago that I was pleased that you were the Chair of a House Subcommittee on, it's House Foreign Affairs on Asia, and I really appreciate that. That's something that I am specifically interested in and have a lot of ties to that area. So happy to follow you in that regard.
Great, I'd love to follow up on that. And I'm glad you bring up the broadband and the equity in making sure everyone has broadband, less-resourced communities, but also rural America, also farming America. Because the truth is, if we want to compete with the rest of the world, you are going to need access to that. And it's always fascinating to me when I visit some of the farms in our area and a lot of people forget that we do have rural farming areas here in Sacramento County, just how high-tech farming is right now and especially if we head into what looks like at least a year of a drought. I mean, management of water, using all that technology is hugely important. So making sure it's there for our families, our kids, but also our businesses and farmers. So it is part of critical infrastructure. Well, I look forward to working with all of you. I think this is an opportunity to work on a lot of the projects that I know the city council has been working on and thinking about it and thinking about how we plan for the future. David, I see your hand up.
All right, I thought you might be wrapping up there. I wanted to get a question before you did. Thank you for being here, we really appreciate it. You know, the infrastructure need in this country, and of course, now we're sort of wondering what's the definition of infrastructure, but the traditional definition of infrastructure, roads, bridges, bicycle connections, sidewalks, those sorts of things, the need is enormous because the nation's sort of overbuilt what we can afford to maintain. And so that puts every jurisdiction behind the eight ball. And Rancho Cordova, we've tried to be in front of that as much as possible. And our recent measure R is going to help us a lot towards that goal of trying to adequately maintain and improve what we've already got on the ground. But in our region, we've got huge, huge infrastructure challenges. And one that comes to mind, of course, is the connector that cuts a swath right in your, it's basically your project, right? It's the largest transportation project in your district. And the real difficulty for the connector, although we can all see the value of it, is that it falls outside of traditional funding categories. You know, it's part county and part city and well, actually, part three cities and part two counties and it's hard for that to get a regional priority. And so I think this is a perfect example of where the federal government can step in and say, that for economic development reasons, for safety reasons, for freight reasons, is a priority. And so I look forward to working with you on that board. I'm the vice chair currently, I've been the chair before, I think I'll be the chair next year. It's a huge project, we're going to work a long time on it, but I look forward to working with you on that this year. I think you were kind of referencing that earlier.
No, absolutely, David. It's what you and I have talked about. The local level, the cities, the county, you've all done the work and put in obviously great grants that are competitive and where I've, in the past, asked the Department of Transportation, it's like, why aren't, they don't have any suggestions in terms of how to improve the grants. And on the local level, a lot of the matching funds have been pulled together. So in my mind, that is the perfect type of project that, if we're looking into the future, we know the number of folks that'll be living along Highway 50, let's start to build that infrastructure, thinking about where we want to be again in the next five years and 25 years. And many of you have heard me say that I think if we're smart and strategic and really think about what we want this region to look like 25 years from now, I really do think Sacramento and the region really can be the heart of California and not just the capital region of California. And you're starting to see some of that happen as folks are starting to move up here, but we've got to build an infrastructure to help manage how we live, how we play, how we move around this district. And again, I know Rancho Cordova has some pretty interesting projects out there in terms of building along light rail and building some higher-density, more affordable housing and mixed-use housing. If we do this right, I think we will all look back at 10, 25 years from now and with a smile on our face.
Well, I'm happy to work with you, Congressman, on those projects in DC. I'm Chair of the National League of Cities Transportation Policy Committee this year and I'm meeting regularly with the Secretary and some administrators as well. So we might need to join our efforts for the greatest benefit of locals here.
No, fantastic. So let's make sure we all work closely together, certainly on the connector. We'll see Secretary Buttigieg virtually tomorrow, so certainly going to ask some questions. Donald, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, just, I know we've talked about this before, but I'd be remiss considering the number of times I've been to cap to cap and talked more to the Republican Caucus about the fact that housing is infrastructure. And as we talk about coming out of a pandemic, we're talking about a lot of people that are about to be displaced because moratoriums are probably going to end at some point, but we are still woefully underbuilt when it comes to housing. And the number one driver for homelessness is a lack of housing. And so I know in the Democratic Caucus, at least in the Senate, I believe in the House as well, that the view of, just like David said, roads, tunnels, and bridges, ports, those are all have been infrastructure, but if we don't address housing, we're still going to continue to have this lingering problem out there. So hopefully as your caucus and the Democratic Caucus is in general between both houses, continue to look at that, to understand that housing really is a critical part of infrastructure that has to be addressed.
No, absolutely. And I think, again, as we write this bill, the parameters, and again, the President put a large number out there, again, I don't know what the final funding number will be, but it's the Jobs and Recovery Act as opposed to, it is going to be a major infrastructure bill, but affordable housing and thinking about how we build a more affordable and as well as commercial, right, housing stock's hugely important. And part of that is having the infrastructure that goes along with that, but I think there is a real opportunity here. He also talks about jobs, the vocational and technical jobs and so forth, because part of our challenge is we may get some of that funding, but then having the workforce that can do this work, and again, these are good-paying jobs. And water infrastructure is another one that we clearly have to pay attention to.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for all your work.
Of course. And it's just beginning. So let's put this pandemic in the rearview mirror and the best way to put it in the past is to build a brighter future for us.
Amen, thank you.
Thank you again, Ami. Thank you for your time.
Look forward to working with you.
All right, I'm going to put my glasses back on. Dang it, took them off there. Young for a minute. All right, can we get Robert Sanger up here? Please. There he is, there's the man, the legend and the myth. All right. Get this ready. Always weird. All right. This proclamation is presented to the Folsom-Cordoba Partnership declaring April as National Financial Literacy Month. And now I will attempt to read it with my glasses. Whereas April is National Financial Literacy Month to increase awareness and improve financial literacy programs among adults and youth by promoting financial well-being for all consumers across the county. And the Folsom-Cordoba Partnership operates a financial empowerment workshops, instills core concepts for personal financial with better understanding of savings, banking, investing, credit health, financial, higher education, taxes, insurance, consumer fraud. And the National Financial Educators Council found that the impact of financial socialization, financial literacy increased financial well-being for adults. 52% of young adults, 18 to 24 report, they would have benefited from more management forces in high school. 100% of students benefit from financial education programs and are more likely to take a proactive approach towards saving for college, especially when you go to Rancho because of the program that allows you to go to college for free. 67% of the parents report that financial education for their children early on in life helped them to understand what is needed to achieve financial balanced life. Whereas financial literacy programs have proven to lay a foundation for continued prosperity to gain the skills for financial fiscal resources responsible to avoid deceptive and predatory practices. The city council of Rancho Cordoba does hereby proclaim April National Financial Literacy Month and celebrate all financial literacy programs that support our residents in Rancho Cordova. Whereas I have set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Rancho Cordova be fixed on April 5th, 2021 for the Cordova Community Council. And Robert Sanger is here. Robert, would you like to say some words?
Yes, thank you. We appreciate the proclamation in recognizing April as the National Financial Literacy Month. And I actually have asked Shinder Gill, our Director of Programs that oversees a lot of the programs where we have embedded financial empowerment into our programming, to just share a little bit more about what we're doing here in Rancho Cordova.
Thank you, Robert. So as Robert was sharing, FCCP, which is also lovingly known as the Partnership, has been able to provide financial education with the generous support of Office of Child Abuse Prevention, Cal Money Smarts, and also the city of Rancho Cordova. So with this funding, we have currently been able to serve over 200 individuals, ranging from young children within school settings learning about college savings. from young children within school settings learning about college savings, then moving into young adults, learning about financial independence, and then also working with young families with children as well. So the curriculum that we've utilized is the Your Money, Your Goal. So this curriculum has positively influenced the financial behavior changes and overall money health. Furthermore, we have been able to expand services within different regions of Sacramento, Cordova, and offer services in four different languages. We're really proud of that. So English, primary, Spanish, Farsi, and now Russian as well. And we have increased demand to be able to expand even further. And so we're working collectively with the community in figuring out how do we do that effectively? So that's some of the things that we're doing on our end. And then the last part that we've learned is with the modules, we want to make sure that participants not only do a few modules, but actually complete the full nine modules. Because what we've learned is that completion of the full modules will lead to long-term financial health. More importantly, it kind of becomes what we've known as familial legacy that gets passed on from one generation to the next. So that's something that we have been actively working on. And it's become a primary, um, strategic framework for us within our job center and also with our FRC. So that's some of the things that we're doing and we want to continue to do this, start early as we know it's the key to long-term financial health and success.
Gary, you're on mute.
Thank you so much and congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Next is my favorite part, is I get to celebrate someone's 23rd birthday. So let's make sure she's up. I don't see her anymore. Where did she sneak off to?
Oh yeah, she's, she's not on anymore.
She just lost connection, I'm sorry. I think she's.
She's trying to hide from it. She knows what singing is about to be done. Oh, don't hide from this, this is going to be good.
It's never pretty on Zoom, so I don't blame her.
Ah, it's just fun. I can wait, did we deliver her cake to her, her, her house? Should I go back? Do you, do you want to go forward and then go back? Uh?
Yeah, we could come, we could come back to this.
All right. As soon as she comes back, she's getting a birthday blowout from our voices. All right, so we're going to move forward, public comment.
Mayor, she's back.
This is wishing to address the council for any.
Mayor Gatewood, she's back.
Linda, where are you? I don't see her. Oh, there she is. There she is. Bam! Don't try to hide from this voice. Oh, you're muted, by the way. Don't try to hide from this. This is your birthday, your 23rd birthday. Yeah. All right. Everyone together, we're going to celebrate, we're going to sing happy birthday, so get yourself off mute. And we're going to, Siri, off mute. There we go. David, off mute. All right. Micah, off mute. You can still see it, want to hear it. All right. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Together, guys. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Lisa. Happy birthday to you. All right.
You guys are good at pottery.
I think we're getting better every time.
Yeah, I love the idea.
Next time we get to do this will be in council. All right. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference by using Zoom. If you want to make a public comment, use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of the screen. If you participate by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by Stacy Vitner. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name of the community of residence. Under provision of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on an item not on the agenda unless it is demonstrated to be of the emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Stacy, do we have anyone down, public comment?
Yes, we have a couple of hands raised and, uh, we'll start with the caller who, um, their telephone number starts with 1-916-205. And I'm going to go ahead and unmute you and you'll have three minutes to address the council. Caller with the telephone number 916-205, are you there?
It looks like they're speaking, but we can't hear them.
I don't see it moving. It would highlight if they were speaking.
It just did.
Oh, there you go. They unmuted themselves? You just muted yourself, 916-205?
Maybe we can come back Stacy and go to the next caller.
Sure, absolutely. So we'll go to Kathy next. And Kathy, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
We hear you.
Hello? Okay. My name is Kathy Birch, and I thank you in advance for listening to my concerns. I have lived at the end of Sterling Park Drive next to the orchard on the Cassis property since September of 1988. And many of us neighborhood residents walk daily to and from Riverbend Park, which is formerly Gady Park, at various times of the day and some of us with our dogs. The traffic on Rod Boudreaux is dangerous due to cars speeding to and from the park, and it's gotten worse. The cement curbs for designated bike lanes did not deter the speeders as was intended. And the road between the payment guard shack and the metal gate has no speed bumps and is treated like NASCAR racetrack by some drivers. On Friday last month, Friday, March 12th, about 9:30 in the morning, my neighbor and I from Tiffany West, um, were returning from our walk from Gady Park and two cars were racing to get to the park so fast that the surge of the wind from the second car, uh, late model black Mustang with white wide strips on it, almost blew my neighbor to the ground. Two days later, on Sunday, March 14th, approximately 4:30 PM, there was a high-speed trace involving a brown SUV, the park ranger, and law enforcement helicopter chasing the suspect from the park towards Folsom Boulevard. It was so fast that it almost struck my neighbor, who's a retired fighter, firefighter and his lady friend. If the recorded public easements on the Cassis property were open and identified and maintained, we would not need to walk on Rod Boudreaux Drive. We could instead use the north-south portion of the easement. And for our neighborhoods to walk or ride bikes to the public library, we could use a portion of the recorded easement, which is currently blocked, that connects Sterling Park Drive to Mirada Del Rio. So thank you for your attention in this matter and the safety of your constituents. And happy birthday, Linda.
Thank you, Kathy.
Got that all in three minutes.
Cyrus.
Did I get me? Okay, thank you so much.
Go ahead, Donald.
I was just Cyrus or somebody on staff. Could, could we, um, direct members of the public that, that have a question about the, the easement issue? I believe there's now a statement on our website somewhere regarding this, or if you wanted to do an update as far as what's going on with that?
Sure, that's, uh, I can do that either now or later as part of my.
Go ahead, Donald, go ahead Cyrus, go ahead and do it now, in case people are going to bring it up.
Yeah, I think the, uh, the only comment I have about the easement and, uh, we had issued a notice of violation to the property owner, uh, through our code enforcement. Uh, the property owner wanted to, uh, have a public hearing. Uh, they, they felt that some, um, uh, some of the, uh, easements were not available, uh, entirely to the public at this time. Uh, we were planning a public, uh, public hearing for April 20th. And we heard as late last week that the property owner has, uh, agreed to remove the fence. I'm not sure if the fence has been removed or not yet, but, uh, because of that, because of the, that action, the public hearing is no longer needed. So the, the fence has either come down or will be coming down shortly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Cyrus.
All right. Go ahead, Stacy.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the caller of 916-205, and I'm going to ask that, uh, you unmute yourself so that you can speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, this is Helen Willen-Bashaw. Um, I live on Terra Grande Circle. My three minutes is going to be devoted to, since we put this bike trail in that goes from the park up past Route Tier, that overhead bridge on Route Tier, you can, you have no traffic when a wide load is coming on it. It is too narrow for wide loads. Now that we hear there's some money coming in, why don't we widen that overpass? It should have been widened before you took away because traditionally we've had wide loads coming down and across that bridge. So it's a, it's a safety issue now. It slows traffic and idiots try to pass the wide load, which is not going to happen. And then on tapping with this, uh, easement routine about the, uh, on, in 1973, Dr. Cass had his, um, hearing about that easement and he was informed he could not put any fencing up to block that easement. That is written in the record. So the, any arguments about the easement, um, is a second bite of the apple, which is illegal. Thank you.
Okay, our next public comment is from Mark Berry. And Mark, I'm going to unmute you as well, and you'll have three minutes.
Mark, you're on mute.
Mr. Berry, you're, you're muted right now.
How about now? Thank you. Well, I'll start the introduction again a little bit. I just wanted to say thank you, uh, um, Stacy, and thank you, uh, Mayor Gatewood and council members for, uh, letting me speak here for a few minutes. Um, so I'm, I'm talking about, um, in, um, uh, the recorded public easements. They've been, uh, something that's been discussed a lot apparently. And what I'd like to do is, uh, make a bit of a proposal. I know that, um, uh, you know, for our neighborhood, it's very important for the connectivity and the Parkway groups, it's important to them also. But I'm wondering if we could maybe open up a, some sort of public dialogue on, on, on these, um, you know, it, it seems as though these recorded public easements, what we're going to do with them, how we're going to, uh, go about, um, opening them up, it still seems to be a, uh, an issue that's unresolved. So my question really is, um, you know, what is the process for having a bit of a public meeting on this? Or is there somebody in particular, um, myself or some of the, uh, groups who have interest in the public easements could meet with a particular person, uh, from the city? And I'd really appreciate, uh, I could take comments now, or if there's just a direction I should go to talk to somebody, I'd appreciate that.
Is that, Adam, is that something you can answer or Cyrus?
Mr. Berry, I can answer that. I think this could be, uh, a conversation with our public works and planning teams.
Okay.
Uh, they, they can engage, you know, I think we'll be, uh, happy to hear what comments or what suggestions or ideas are out there. Uh, but I will, uh, um, connect Mr. Berry with, uh, with our staff probably for some time.
Because my, my inbox, uh, I've got an awful lot of comments about just that, the connectivity issues and, uh, the nature of the easements. So I think having some kind of a meeting about it and just letting people know what the situation is, what's possible, uh, and what isn't, whatever, whatever the case may be, would be really valuable.
Maybe nice to get all the facts on the table, so, um, just figure this out.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Cyrus, appreciate that.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, Stacy.
Okay, our next speaker, uh, is telephone number 916-804. And you've been unmuted and you'll have three minutes.
Hello all, uh, this is Faisen McGil from Lincoln Village. Um, I wanted to share some information with our residents. Um, so my Nana is homebound and can't transfer to a car and was unable to get the COVID-19 vaccine. Um, the county actually has a mobile vaccination team that will come out to homebound residents and give them the vaccine in their homes. Um, and sometimes this benefit will extend to their caretakers. And so fortunately for us, Nana and I both were able to get, um, the Johnson and Johnson vaccine on Friday. And so I'd like to share some information about this program, um, for our residents who are homebound and their caretakers as well, so hopefully they could get signed up. Um, so reach out residents to the county of Sacramento at an email address, covid19vaccine@saccounty.net. Or you can phone this number, 916-875-4756. Whether you're emailing or calling, you will leave information, your contact information, and a brief description of what your circumstance is regarding being homebound. Um, at that point, your information will be recorded and forwarded to supervisor of the COVID-19 strike team. Um, and then they'll be in touch with you and hopefully schedule you for an appointment. Um, again, the email is covid19vaccine@saccounty.net. And the phone number to call is 916-875-4756. That's the COVID-19 hotline. Um, good luck and I hope that more and more of our residents, um, will be able to get vaccinated soon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Stacy, who's next?
The only additional, uh, public comment that we had came by email from Kathy Birch. That has been distributed to the City Council and, uh, that's all that we have, uh, for public comment for items not on the agenda.
All right. Move on to council reports. Siri, tell us what's been going on.
Uh, well, I attended my first EGUSD two-by-two meeting. Um, it was pretty, um, educational. Um, kids are going back to school. Uh, we've seen that it, the percentage higher, is higher for kids going back to school in elementary versus middle school. So, um, that's a good thing. Um, I got an update on where the future high school, um, position stands. And, you know, I learned it's tied mostly to the development, uh, for which the future schools will come up. And it's contingent on more homes being built and more residents moving into those homes. And, uh, while building is still going strong and the developers are focused on selling homes, which is a critical step to achieving the needed mass for the future high school. Um, I attended, uh, the Sir Optimist Live Your Dream Awards Celebration. Sir Optimist, if you don't know, um, is a global volunteer organization that provides women and girls with access to education and training. Um, and due to the contributions from many of the council members here on this board, they gave, um, awards, uh, to three women from Rancher Cordova, which was both inspiring and empowering to see how these women have, you know, faced so much difficulties in life and are still. faced so much difficulties in life and are still able to achieve so much. One woman said, you know, she's been through pretty much everything except death. And as horrifying as it was to hear, it was really inspiring to hear her speak that, you know, she's achieved all of this in spite of all of that. And then I also attended a WINS, the Volunteer Association, meeting this week. Just to see how things are going on their end, I heard an update from them on issues that they're seeing, on, you know, safety and security in, in the area. And about, you know, the need for more recreation avenues. Once COVID starts opening up, absolutely we'd like to see more people out and about. And once we see more people out and about, we need more recreation avenues, you know, bowling, movie theaters and so on and so forth. I attended, it takes a Lincoln Village HOA meeting and talked to them about what they have going on in their community and gave them also an update on COVID. As FISA just spoke, she talked about her Nana's mobile vaccination. I did also gave an update on our upcoming COVID-19 vaccine clinic here at the city hall. As you know, cities, our staff is working with the Sacramento County Health Department to provide a pop-up vaccine clinic at the city hall sometime in mid-April. The staff is working on logistics and securing a service provider. Once we have additional details, we'll provide it to the community. And in the meantime, as I spoke to the Lincoln Village meeting, to everybody, once we have more details, we'd appreciate the help in getting the word out and other assistance that's needed to help with this vaccination, vaccination process. And last but not least, April is Celebrate Diversity Month. There you go. Let me give me a quick shout out. You know, this is the time for us to appreciate the perspectives, cultures and lifestyles that we encounter every day. And we need to celebrate the powerful effects of diversity. So let's celebrate Diversity Month.
All right. Thank you Siri. Davis. Our thing's gone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, a lot has been going on in, in Lisa meetings. A lot's been going on. My, my tour of duty as NLC's Transportation Chair has me, has me hopping. We had a briefing with the White House last week talking about upcoming legislation and the infrastructure part of, of that package. Of the total proposed, about $2 trillion package, six to seven percent of that is roads, bridges, sidewalks, that sort of traditional infrastructure. And there's a lot more in that bill. I'm happy to share those, those details with you, but I don't want to go through the list. It's quite, quite lengthy. But that's going to be an interesting process moving forward. Trying to match up federal dollars with regional needs. And the big advantage we've got this time around is that the Secretary of Transportation is a former mayor, Secretary Pete, of course, former mayor. And his focus in the department, and I would say also in, in both houses of Congress, is not on state DOTs, but on MPOs and even, even large cities. And that's a huge advantage because in previous funding rounds, you can think of the Obama era rescue package, economic rescue package, where dollars were given out to states. And the states were given instructions saying, spend those transportation dollars on every city according to this formula in your jurisdiction. And what some state Department of Transportation's did was rather than hand those dollars over to those jurisdictions, the state decided how to spend those dollars in that jurisdiction. So it'd be like, you know, State of California called Rancho Cordova up and said, hey, we're going to, we're going to spend all of our dollars improving Highway 50, our road, through your jurisdiction. That's how you got your dollars. That has left a permanent scar on the political psyche and the policy psyche in DC, those activities. And so we're avoiding that this time and hopefully getting funded to MPOs. So that's, that's a big focus for NLC, obviously, trying to get dollars to jurisdictions where, you know, local counties and cities are responsible for about 80% of the road miles in the United States. So it makes sense that those dollars come to us and don't go to, to other entities. SECOG announced their regional funding round selections this past week. Cyrus, I don't know if you were going to talk about that or announce it in any way, but I'll just briefly say Rancho Cordova did great. We, we really hit it out of the park on these competitive funding rounds. These things are not political or partisan. I mean, I'm, I'm there as your representative, but we don't, you know, build a coalition to vote for these appropriations. These are handled by committees that evaluate the applications on a non-conflict of interest basis. So you can't ever be involved in, in evaluating something that's your own. And then all sorts of metrics are held up against them. And then the best projects are chosen. So we had success on Mater Field Road, on Chase Drive and on White Rock applications. So it's really exciting for Rancho Cordova to get three big, three big hits like that. We heard these in the Transportation Committee last week. We'll be voting them on the, on the full board very soon. Now, as you heard me mention earlier to Representative Barra, the connector was not so lucky. And that is sort of an open issue for us in Rancho Cordova. Funding, our segment of the connector immediately north of Douglas in the, in sort of the northeast direction towards El Dorado Hills and Folsom is going to be a real funding challenge. The county of Sacramento never puts this as any sort of a priority, even though it's half theirs or more than half theirs. And of course, as the city, we've got our, our other interests, White Rock, et cetera. So when opportunity arises, I think it's really important for the city to step up for our share of that funding. And I think this is one of those times in, in the federal policymaking that's going on right now and the grant making that will happen soon, that we step up on behalf of the connector to get that segment done. I was a speaker at the Planning Commissioner Academy of the League of California Cities last week. I think this is the third time maybe I've done that duty. It's, it's pretty fun because the planning commissioners, they ask great questions. And of course, we dissolved our planning commission. So I get to have a lot of fun, you know, sort of saying, hey guys, be good. Or, you know, this could, this could happen to you. And they get, they get a big kick out of that, but it's a fun, it's a very fun discussion. And when we get our planning commission back, I strongly urge that our planning commissioners participate in that because they have very blunt and very informative education and training. It's very, very, very helpful for the participants, I think. Siri and I talked to Cyrus last week about getting more vaccine locations in Rancho Cordova. It would appear, although these are all county ran, managed, county run, county approved, the county is the, is the key body in doing this. It appears that very few have actually been done in Rancho Cordova. Siri and I, and Siri could comment on this as well, but we were looking at a map that the county put out and it, it sort of looked like, you know, there's seven in Folsom and maybe two in Rancho Cordova, one of which we'd never heard of and one of which was a pharmacy. And that does not seem appropriate by, by any means. So Cyrus might have something to say more about this as well. We, as I understand it, have talked with county staff trying to find a good location. County staff has requested city hall because of the parking volume available and the indoor space available. Other locations like mill station or, or putting up a tent somewhere do not seem to have enough indoor space and make those sites not possible. There might be some churches that would be possible. But wherever we put this, we need to be sure that the most challenged residents, those who are, you know, have difficulty getting around or perhaps only use public transit, have access to it. So I would suggest we make free Uber available or free Lyft available or consider additional locations that would be more accessible by transit. If, if city hall is the one that the county wants to use, that's the one that they think will work, then hopefully we can find some transportation alternatives to get people there. And then finally, I've attended my third or so regional sanitation meeting. And I want to just update you guys because my, the person I went to, you might remember, and Donald, I don't know if you attended these before me, but, or Bob did, I guess.
Yeah, I never did. I never.
This was the most disjointed meeting you'd ever imagined. You, you would watch it on the website, but then you had audio by a call-in. And the website video was maybe a minute behind the call-in audio. And so they would be doing like a slide presentation. You couldn't follow anything because the video you were getting was a minute old. It just didn't, totally didn't work. And after my complaint, they fixed it. So I guess I've had my first positive impact on regional sand. We hope, we hope more are coming. But I will let you know as my, as my mission there continues. My goal is to make regional sand as infill development friendly as possible to help us out with redevelopment along Folsom Boulevard and other, other corridors. That's my report.
Thank you. Sounds like you've been busy. All right Linda.
Oh, that sounds so frustrating David. Thank you to FISA and to David and Siri for their work to get more vaccination sites in town. And I know that Stacy probably recorded the information that FISA presented about the website and the telephone number so that it can be posted on our website. David, in terms of getting people to city hall, Albert and I had lunch with the general manager, Henry Lee, at Regional Transit the other day. And one of the things we confirmed is that city hall is definitely on the smart RT route. And so you can call, smart RT generally serves challenged neighborhoods, but you can definitely call RT and, and get a ride to city hall for a vaccination clinic. So that makes this a really good location and hopefully that, that will, that will continue. Our, our meeting with Henry Lee was much more productive actually than our regional transit meeting, which lasted all of about 20 minutes and really consisted of nothing but a calendar. Garrett and I attended the HCP meeting a couple of weeks ago. And it was really almost totally devoted to Rancho Cordova projects, which was lots of fun. There are some challenges at the HCP based on the way in which it was written. But considering that the thing is 10 or 12 volumes of thousands of pages each, it's probably no wonder. And so Darcy's going to report to us later on that. Maria and I participated in a thing from the National Women's Political Caucus, a Zoom seminar titled The Unhoused, but it was basically homelessness through a gender lens. And there was a panel of three people who spoke. The, from my perspective, the most impressive lady is the person who is the executive director at my sister's house. She would really know exactly what is needed and when it's needed and at what stages it's needed. And obviously knows a lot about how to put it all together. So providing great leadership there. And then there were a variety of elected officials, including myself, who were asked to speak. And of course, I talked about Veterans Village and our original project and our need to do more and the, no further notice of funding availability that we are releasing now. And then finally, I would ask that we adjourn tonight in the memory of two wonderful gentlemen who have left us this year or this last couple of weeks. And of course, one of them is Gregory Condos, our wonderful artist here in, in this region. We would refer everybody to the beautiful painting of the American River that we are pleased to have here in city hall. Thank you to David and his family for making that possible. And then the other person would be Senator Jim Mills. He was in the state assembly and senate back in the seventies and eighties. And effectively, Jim Mills from San Diego is the reason we have light rail here in this region. He brought the idea, back in, back at that point, it had really sort of devolved into a couple of historic trolleys, like the one in the St. Charles Trolley in New Orleans. And I believe that Portland had its trolley at that point. But they brought the whole idea, they refreshed it, called it light rail instead of trolley. And they brought the whole idea to a pilot project in San Diego, which is now the, the trolley that goes to Tijuana. And it really inspired people all over the state. And Sacramento, a whole group of us got together and ultimately were successful in bringing light rail to the region, even though there were people in the state assembly and senate who felt that we would never make a success of it because we didn't have the residential density that was needed to create ridership. And as we know now, from a study by the University of Texas, the whole idea of giving our school kids free rides on the light rail is paying off handsomely in terms of increased ridership and developing a whole new generation of riders, which is exactly the goal. So that would be my report for tonight. Thank you Garrett.
Thank you Linda.
Thank you Linda. I had a, I had a note there for Gregory Condos as well. I was, I attended his service and burial, burial today, yeah. Yeah, he was certainly a great man and painted Rancho Cordova and the American River here. So it's, it was an honor to be there representing the city. And, and if we could adjourn in his honor, that would be awesome.
Super. Thank you.
Excellent. All right Dave, Donald.
Uh, yeah, just to piggyback a little bit on what Siri talked about with Elk Grove Unified USD. And kind of what we've heard in general, I, I think I said this at the last meeting because SAC City was seeing roughly the same results. It seemed like this two-day in-person concurrent educational model, it's attracting back about 30% of the student population. That goes actually down in the higher grades, into the mid twenties, it's sounding like. Although I do know in Elk Grove, it's a moving target because they're, they're doing some additional surveys. Because with the number of students that are coming back, they actually could go four days a week or, or some, some stretch to that extent. But the concern is if they go to four days and then you change your mind and you want to come because it's four days and that's not more convenient, they may not be able to fit you. And so it's almost coming down to a classroom by classroom decision as far as how many students they can bring back on and still safely socially distance. David, you're probably aware of this, but also complicating the matter is most of these school districts that are returning now were under the six feet guidance given by the CDC for the last nine months or so. It was just changed to three feet within the last month or so. And so as they've gotten these plans all approved by the county, most of them are very reluctant to go back and go back through that process to try to figure it out. But most of the, the feedback we're hearing from the school districts is at that three foot level, which I believe extends to eighth grade, I could be wrong, maybe only go to sixth. But then in the younger grades, that they could fit for the most part all cater six students back on campus within a classroom at a three foot level. There's enough room to do that. The six foot was a non-starter for any of them. But at three feet, they said that they would be able to accommodate it. And interestingly enough, even though the CDC is not recommending three feet in the older ages, even if it was three feet, they couldn't fit that many students safely back into a classroom at the higher grade levels because of the, the class sizes that they carry. So that's just kind of, I think where we are at the moment. Elk Grove's been back 10 days or so, I believe. Folsom Cordova's obviously been back the longest. SAC City Unified, I believe goes back next week. So we'll start to see what, what their numbers are looking like. I know from their superintendent's feedback, they were hoping to get to 30%. That was, that would be a stretch goal to start with. And so obviously they're, I believe the last ones to go back. But again, it, it's a really evolving conversation. What we were talking about two months ago to what we were talking about a month ago to what we're talking about today continues to evolve. So we have, I think we have a two by two just about every four to six weeks with one of these school districts. So hopefully we'll continue to learn and hear more good news. Metro air quality mess, there are a handful of things that we discussed. I think the, the one thing I wanted to share here was there's a grant program and it's escaping me where the funding came from. I, I didn't take my notes on it. I'm looking at the agenda. I didn't say. But the Air District is administering a program to, it's called Clean Cars For All, Clean Cars For All. And essentially what it is, is it's a grant program for lower income residents where you can turn in a running car, it has to be running, but you can trade in a running car and get up to 9,000. uh, but you can trade in a running car and get up to nine thousand dollars towards buying a clean vehicle. So this is a hybrid, uh, fuel cell or an all-electric car. Um, and that can go towards the car and that can also go towards retrofitting your house for a charging station in your house. Um, and they had some testimonials from, from some folks that were able to turn in fairly unreliable cars, but were still running, um, and got up to nine thousand dollars towards buying um, a plug-in vehicle or like a Toyota Prius or something like that. So um, if you're interested in more information, check out the, the Air District's website. That's the Sacramento Air District, Sacramento Metro Air Quality Management District's website. I believe if you tap Sac Air Quality, you can find it on Google. Um, so interesting uh, program that I thought, I thought would, would hopefully benefit a lot of our residents that um, might want to trade in that clunker for something that's more reliable, more energy efficient. Um, I don't know if anybody else got this survey. I, I know a lot of you know that I'm on the steering committee for CAP to CAP, which is with the Metro Air, uh, I'm sorry, with the Metro Chamber, there's too many metros here. Uh, with the Metro Chamber, um, in looking at some sort of federal lobbying program for this year or this fall. Um, so there were some surveys that went out asking about how much folks are willing to, to, to pay for that. I don't know if anybody else got it, but they're starting to look at trying to come up with some sort of format. Um, most of us at the kind of senior steering committee have said that we really need to be doing something now because there's going to be an infrastructure bill written in the next, you know, month or two, like we just heard. And sitting on our hands waiting till the fall to do something is just unacceptable. Um, so from my standpoint, we've already started uh, looking at programming, probably for May, for the Community Resources Team, it'll be around affordable housing and homeless advocacy and service, and services, uh, because obviously we believe that that's going to be part of uh, this infrastructure uh, pro, plan that comes uh, from Congress. So uh, more to come on that, but I'll, I'll definitely share if there's any sessions that you all might be interested in. And then finally, um, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, uh, near the end of March. And I shared this with some of you, but um, I was uh, elected, appointed to the Los Rios College Foundation. So this is the um, the foundation that supports the Los Rios Community College District for all four of the uh, community colleges. Um, I believe technically, if you look at their website, it's got my day job titled there, but obviously we all know our partnerships with Los Rios have, um, you know, are very robust at the city level. And that's, you know, I think one of the main reasons that uh, I was asked to consider uh, joining. Um, but really excited about um, being able to also represent the city and, and in that capacity. I believe I'm also the only elected official on that, um, on that board. Uh, but hopefully that'll help us continue to expand our, our, you know, award-winning and very well-recognized promise program. Um, and as we look at more targeted um, industries and uh, workforce, targeted workforce development uh, in the future, um, hopefully that'll benefit the city and the colleges. So uh, with that, that's all I got, Garrett.
Wow. Luckily, we're not busy at all. So uh, first off, good job, our two healthcare uh, people, David and Siri, really spearheading, getting more um, places to do. I know a couple of bigger churches would, of course, probably volunteer if you needed them to, if we needed another place to do vaccinations. Pretty sure the St. John Vianney is Capital Christian and maybe even the one off of Sunrise would definitely be there to help out. So if we need to, we can lean on the uh, uh, religious council to help out with that. Um, so here's what happened. Did a presentation for SRBX, they're excited about all movement that's going on in the city. We happen to be one of the most positive places to have, build homes and work with. Uh, thanks to Cyrus for changing the reputation of the city of Rancho, it's being a helpful place to build and, and come into. Um, uh, thank you to my city staff for putting Move for Hunger. So big thank yous to North America Van Storage and Model of Van and Storage. Uh, they'll be setting up uh, deposits to where to put canned goods and foods at City Hall and Police Station with hopes to drop it off at the Cordova Food Locker. So I'm excited about that, helping out with the food to be able to help out Food Locker. Um, I went to the permanent location for Fire Station sixty-eight and did a groundbreaking. So it's always good to hear that the Fire Department is donating time, energy and money and dropping a brand-new one into the city of Rancho Cordova. So for all the people, uh, and absolutely be excited because you will have permanent, they're closing the temporary one and the weird house thing and open a brand-new fire station. Um, the Sacramento Library Authority had their budget meeting and their regular meeting. We couldn't get quorum for the budget meeting, so we pushed most of it to the secondary meeting. Uh, very exciting, they're opening a brand-new um, library, heard lots about that. And I am trying to put us on the list because I'm the vice chair. So hopefully when I'm the chair, we could have our own library in the city of Rancho Cordova and not in the outskirts, right on the edge, but actually in the city of Rancho Cordova. And then uh, Linda and I had the South JPA uh, meeting where, you know, luckily I was able to help bring that together. There's a lot of projects coming up in Rancho Cordova and I'm very excited to be there right at the end. And we got the Civic Center presentation. I mean, it's really exciting to see all the energy that's going in to discussions on what Folsom Boulevard. Uh, the more people we can get at those council meetings to listen in and hear your opinions. But I'm gonna tell you, this is going to be a great big old star in the middle of Rancho Cordova, also Folsom Boulevard. The interesting part is about this is all the development groups are all excited to see if the theory that everyone's been talking about actually comes to fruition. So this will be the first development in a long time that's next to light rail, that's next to impossibly or when it's going to have some housing. And what does it do to the corridor when you invest this kind of money right next to light rail, right off Freeway Overpass? What actually happens to the community surrounding it? So not just the area we're investing in and the college, but what happens to the surrounding areas? Do businesses come in? Does all of a sudden the community changes there? Does it, does it, does it really help the entire community? So a lot of people are like really watching this to be like, okay, so Rancho Cordova, of course, is trend-setting again, doing the actual stuff that everyone's been talking about. So I even heard from people at David's group in Secog, they're like, we're really excited to see if this investment truly turns into what everyone says is going to happen. So that's it for me, and um, let's go ahead and hear from our city manager.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it's fairly brief. I think the discussion about the vaccines, uh, I have been directly in communication with uh, Dr. Casuri, our, our county health officer, uh, offering the City Hall for vaccination, as been, as it has been mentioned. Uh, we, uh, we hope to do our vaccine clinic in partnership with California North State University on April sixteenth. That date is not firm yet, but we, as soon as we firm it up, uh, we would make sure that we have the, uh, the information out to the community. We're also looking for additional locations. Uh, we are reaching out to the, to CRPD and to see if uh, some of their facilities could be available to us. We'll also be uh, talking to some of the faith um, uh, community organizations and, and see if we, we can find secure additional locations. But this is a good start. We thought that this is going to be uh, the first of many, many other vaccination sites that we would like to work with. Uh, on the funding round, as uh, Councilmember Sander pointed out, we did quite well. Uh, he, uh, I want to take this opportunity and congratulate our Public Works team, Albert Stricker and especially Edgar Medina, who have put an amazing uh, uh, set of applications, uh, of work-winning and, and the funding applications together. We received over twelve point six million. Uh, David mentioned three of those projects, uh, with uh, White Rock Road, Chase Drive, Amazer Field, uh, beautificationally paving. Uh, we also had the fourth one with Peter and McCune uh, in front of the VA Hospital for a high-visibility crosswalk. So that's uh, that was the fourth project that we received a recommendation for funding through a different funding source. Uh, so great, uh, great team, uh, work by our Public Works staff and uh, we look forward to these uh, great projects. And I wanted um, to end tonight, uh, my, my presentation, if the council could indulge me, we had a presentation of video that we had worked on to present to you as part of our police chief's presentation last time. Unfortunately, we ran into some technical difficulties. The video is only about a little over two minutes long. And uh, if uh, I would think it would be good, since it's uh, the presentation is relatively fresh in everybody's mind, that we could take two, three minutes to watch this video.
All right.
So give us just a moment. There's a few steps involved in showing our video. And uh, to the city manager, if you can just give your thumbs up to make sure that um, you can hear the sound on your end when we get ready to play.
You are muted. The city of Rancho Cordova is a safe and inviting place for everyone thanks to the city's four-pronged proactive policing approach, combined with a culture of innovation and a handpicked, dedicated and diverse policing team. Technology and data are powerful tools that RCPD uses to enhance this proactive policing approach. Today, we will introduce you to one of RCPD's technology programs, the Unmanned Aerial System. The Sacramento County Sheriff's Office launched its Unmanned Aerial Systems Program in two thousand nineteen. RCPD launched its program the following year. An unmanned aerial system is a small aircraft that is equipped with a camera and operated by officers from the ground. Officers undergo rigorous training and are certified through the Federal Aviation Administration. The Unmanned Aerial Systems assist RCPD in responding to incidents such as barricaded subjects, wanted persons and search warrants. By sending an unmanned aerial system into the sky or a building during a fast-paced incident, officers on scene get a different perspective of the situation. In addition, the Unmanned Aerial Systems have been used for lifesaving missions such as searching for a missing person or rescuing someone who is stranded, as well as training missions in partnership with other law enforcement and fire agencies. This is an important tool for us and one that we take seriously. We are not using this technology to randomly fly over people's backyards or violate people's civil rights. They are not a substitution for patrol officers or the helicopter, simply a force multiplier for our police department. The Unmanned Aerial Systems are just one form of technology that supports RCPD and keeps the Rancho Cordova community's safety safe.
Thank you, council. That's uh, that concludes my report for today.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, I think you're on mute.
Very good, Cyrus. We have manned robots in city. All right. Consent calendar items of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item individual consideration, all items will be approved in one motion. Uh, city clerk announced the um, consent calendar. Ask if the council, uh, after any, any, sorry, ask if there are any items you wish to pull.
During the motion. I will second. Item sixteen point one through sixteen point nine.
Linda, I, I think that was Garrett talking, so I think you want to make a motion. I'll second.
Okay.
There you go.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood.
Yes. All right. Consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items are, consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items may be approved in one motion. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing item and ask if there's any public comments.
Uh, we-
Do you have a gavel?
We have um, one public comment that has come in for item seventeen point six. Um, that public comment came in via email from Donald Childs. It has been uh, distributed to the city council and is available on the city's website. And I do not see any hands in Zoom or by telephone.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public hearing. Uh, are there any items council wishes to pull? Hearing none, may I, hearing none, do you have a motion? Siri.
Donald.
I second.
Yes. All right.
I think-
Roll call.
It looks like Linda got dropped off.
That's all right. She'll be back.
Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Hi.
Councilmember Budge is absent at this time. Mayor Gatewood.
Hi.
Right, so we do not have any public hearing items. So we are going on to regular calendar items, which are very exciting. And I'm gonna ask Stacy to go ahead and announce the subject.
So the first subject for um, regular calendar is scooter share micro-mobility contract with White Fox scooters for a one-year pilot program.
All right, can I ask Stefan to be brought to the front and Byron, Byron.
Hi, Byron Tang.
Byron Tang. I was gonna get there. All right, guys, go ahead. Wow us.
Um, so is it sharing the PowerPoint or?
We're pulling, we're pulling up the PowerPoint.
All right, you hear me? I switched my headset.
And Byron and Stefan, I know that you mentioned that maybe Sid would be joining. I don't see Sid.
Okay.
Just so you know, but I'll keep looking.
All right, um, thank you. So good evening, Mayor Gatewood, city council members Cyrus and Adam. Um, we're happy here to present uh, a very exciting opportunity for city Rancho Cordova. This is the third time we have tried to get a scooter company here in Rancho Cordova. So uh, without further ado, let's uh, go on to the goals of our presentation. Next slide, please. Okay, so uh, for today's presentation, we'd like to uh, first update um, council uh, on our previous and current micro-mobility efforts and get everyone on the same page. Then we'd like to present the staff summary of White Fox Scooter's proposal to the city. And then we'd like to announce the staff recommendation to execute the contract with White Fox Scooter's initial twelve-month pilot program. We'd like to solicit feedback from council and we'd like to get any other feedback from council on micro-mobility programs. Uh, with us today is me, Byron Tang, uh, Public Works, and Stefan Heisler for Housing Manager. And Sid is supposed to be here. Uh, he's the founder and CEO. Um, he may, he may not be here, but we'll be happy to answer any questions uh, as much as we can. Next slide, please.
Good evening, council. Again, Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the city and also tag along on this, on this project. Um, so really quickly, just uh, for anybody in the audience who isn't, who isn't uh, familiar with micro-mobility, uh, basically what we're talking about tonight is a service in which bicycles, scooters or other devices are made available for shared use on a very short-term basis, a very short-term rental type of program. Uh, this transitions the ownership, theft, parking, storage and maintenance to a private company and also increases mobility by giving users the option to utilize mobility devices for short trips. So again, short-term rentals, usually by the minute, hourly or daily. Next slide. So just in a quick recap of the city's prior efforts and current efforts to bring bikes and scooter share to Rancho, city Rancho Cordova. So back, back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, the city was working with Lime Bikes at the time. And their proposal was to bring dockless bike share to the city. And we ended up approving an MOU and then as soon as we did that, unfortunately Lime pulled out of the deal. Uh, following that effort in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, um, we were working with, staff was working with Secog, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, on grant funding to bring Gacha at first, that was then acquired by OJO. the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, on grant funding to bring Gotcha at first, that was then acquired by OJO, to bring both bikes and scooters to the city. And they had a, a sort of a hub model, which was not docked but not dockless either. So, SECOG did get under contract with Gotcha, but unfortunately, right as that was beginning to try and launch, I think COVID was also striking at the same time. So, among other things, the, the project was not able to work financially. There's still a contract, but it doesn't look like it's going to come to fruition. So, late last year, the city was approached by White Fox Scooters with a proposal for a 100% docked scooter model. And so, this is the subject of tonight's presentation. Next slide.
Okay. And I'm going to talk a little bit about White Fox Scooters, the company. So, White Fox reached out to the city in October 2020. And they are headquartered in the East Coast, specifically in the New York area, New Jersey, in three cities. They are expanding. They're a small company and they are, but they are expanding and they are expanding at Oklahoma Baptist University, Lake Las Vegas Water Park, and in New, New Jersey. Next slide. So, one of the, one of the key features of White Fox Scooters that kind of separates them from other competitors is they have a fully docked model. Their scooters are required to be docked and you see some of the pictures here of how they're docked. And they, these docks are modular and they can be put on public or private property. And they keep the scooters upright, upright and organized and they also provide charging. And then, they also, because of COVID-19, provide sanitizing options to make sure that, to reduce transmission of the virus and keep it safe where people use it. Next slide, please. So, this is a draft focused area of where White Fox proposed that they would see as a good starting point. Of course, this is a kind of new to be in a suburban area for scooters. A lot of scooters are in high, high-density urban areas. So, but this is kind of the area that they saw that had a very high potential in city Rancho Cordova and they'd like to start within this area and they'll work with staff as we go along. So, focus area is bounded by Folsom International, Zimfandel, Data, and Prospect. Initially, transit hubs are looking around residential and commercial areas and the transit hubs. Next slide, please. So, for pricing, it's pretty simple. It's $1 start and 15 cents per minute. They do have low-income plans and options, which is able to be unlocked without a smartphone. The app itself that can, that can unlock the scooters is available on Apple and Google Play. Next slide, please. So, what you see here is the picture of the app. So, on the far left is kind of the menu options you get. And then, the next screen to the right of that is where the docking area is and where the scooters would be located. So, people can see where they are. The screen to the right of that is if you're trying to unlock a scooter, it gives you the information, how much it costs and how, how much it's charged and be able to reserve or ride it. And then, last is you can see the ride history of the user. Next slide, please.
So, we won't go over all of the contract details, but we do want to go over a few highlights with the council just to let you know sort of a little bit more of how this deal is structured. So, we're looking at a, a contract for a pilot program with White Fox. And fortunately, you know, not, not, or not, not like the OJO-Gotcha proposal, which was going to require subsidy. This program will not require any kind of grant funding or operation, or operational subsidy. Also, this proposal is all electric scooters. There are no bikes in this proposal. They are 100% docked. And we're looking at, at least through the pilot program, a minimum of five docks and 25 scooters or a maximum of 80 docks and 400 scooters. The dock locations would be mutually agreed to by the city and White Fox. And initial docks, at least initially, will be located on city property. Future docks will include private properties. I think that, of course, White Fox Scooters, by law, they do need to get city approval to, you know, by contract ordinance to run a program. But they do also, of course, want to have city support before they start reaching out to private properties to locate their docks. But that is definitely part of the plan going forward. So, the, the initial term of this contract would be 12 months with subsequent terms available with city consent. And White Fox has requested exclusive rights, which this contract would have for the first 12 months and then that would be negotiable in future. And then, also, just to make sure that, you know, we actually see devices on the ground and running and we're not just wasting our time. And we do have the clause that the city can terminate if no implementation within the first six months. Next slide, please. So, staff recommends council adopt the resolution this evening to direct staff to execute the contract with White Fox Scooters for a 12-month pilot program. The next steps with this would be if directed by council, staff will execute the contract with White Fox and will expect scooters to become operational by fall of this year. And then, also during the pilot program, we do have a couple of options under that new state law, AB 1286, to consider. Looking going forward, since this is just a pilot program, you know, we can, we can look into the future model of how we structure these things with hopefully more companies in the future or a very productive relationship with White Fox, so either by contract or ordinance or business permissions. And we'll, we'll be figuring that out during the pilot program. And that, that concludes our presentation. If there are any questions, we are happy to open it up for comments and questions.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Linda.
Okay. So, I noticed that while the western boundary is data, on the other hand, the eastern boundary is only Prospect Park. And I'm curious to know why they didn't go to Kilgore? And is that a possibility?
I think, I think all of that is open right now. I think, you know, that was just a very draft concept of a service area. So, just showing the, the general area and a little bit of the background research that White Fox had initially done with the city. So, we definitely expect to be further delineating that with White Fox before we roll it out. And, and I, and I hear your, your concern and your interest and I think our interest is as well, making sure that, you know, we are as broad as we can be, but also, you know, compact enough so that we can ensure the success of the program.
Right. And, and so, you know, we all, we all live and work here. So, if you think about the character of what's between Prospect Park and Kilgore, especially on the north side of White Rock, I know you'll agree that, that there's a lot, the number of workers, the, I mean, normally, the number of workers, the, the mix of ages, the ability to include the students at the pharmacy school and people who are going to live there in the dormitory, you know, those kinds of things would really support going to Kilgore.
Yes. I 100% agree. And we'll, we'll be, we'll be working with them to try and figure out, you know, what, what really makes most sense. Again, this is a very draft concept of where they, the part of the city where they'd want to start. So, those, those white, that white boundary is definitely, you know, not the final version.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. My question is, so you can pick it up from these docked locations and then leave it wherever, then who picks it up?
So, you'd have to, you'd actually have to end the trip at another docking station. Otherwise, you, you still have it checked out and you're still being charged by the minute. So, it'll be, it'll always start and end at one of those docked locations.
Okay. One of the key things that obviously with the scooter program is safety. That's one of the top issues with that. And, you know, we've seen other cities that have catastrophic injuries related with use of scooter. In fact, some of the other cities have stopped this because of the injuries that they're seeing. What is, what is that safety protocol that has been taken into place with White Fox?
Yeah. So, I can speak. White Fox, in addition to their modular docking station, they will, they are able to include helmet lockers with the docking station. So, people will be able to actually check out helmets. And there's an area where you can put the dirty helmets and then they'll, as maintenance, they'll clean them. So, there will be clean helmets available. So, that's, that's one area White Fox is trying to increase in terms of the safety of the, of the user.
Yeah. I'd also add that just per state law, riding scooters on sidewalks is illegal. So, so that won't be happening. And so, that, I mean, that, that also contributes to some of the pedestrian safety. But otherwise, it's, it's very similar to, you know, riding, riding a bike on the streets. There, you know, there are some concerns about, you know, scooters may not be able to maneuver through sort of rough road conditions as well as a bike can. So, some of that can be mitigated through speed limits of the devices, you know, which we'll definitely have in place at the maximum of 15 miles per hour, which is still pretty sufficient to get a nice injury if you hit some rough road. But, you know, we also want to make sure that, you know, the, the, the program is working as, as intended. Some of that also is part of the new state law, requires a higher insurance amount, which, you know, helps to mitigate some of the risk of that. Of course, none of that is liable to the city, you know, as, as somebody who is riding their own personal scooter or bike on city streets, you know, it'd be about the same thing.
And White Fox has also, has also reached out and is willing to work with the city for education and informing users of proper, safe scooter use.
Just, just for my education, don't we usually have a rep from the company when we're having a proposal to the city?
Typically, yes, I would say so. Yeah. I'm, I'm pretty disappointed, actually, that we don't have Sid here. I know when we proposed affordable housing and we didn't have a rep there, that was not the best picture either. So, it was not our intent. We, we, we had him invited and not sure what is the case, but it is what it is. We don't have him here tonight.
All right. Stacy, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have one person via Zoom. And then, we also have one submitted by email. So, we'll allow the person via Zoom go first. The caller with telephone number 916-804, you've been unmuted and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello all, this is Isamugul again. I have two questions. My first question would be, are there age restrictions? What are they? And the second thing is, well, I did participate in the feedback sessions for Gotcha and Lime. So, will there be input from stakeholders on this program before it moves forward? Thank you.
To, to the first question, as an age restriction, California law does require people who operate a scooter to have a driver's license or instructional permit. So, in that sense, there is a restriction for people who can operate the scooters.
To, to the second question, we, we definitely still have that feedback that we, we received from when we were working with OJO and Gotcha and Lime. So, it's definitely still in the back of our minds and we do want to bring that into play as we can. We'll be working with the company to, you know, to see, you know, where, where they, where their best guess is of where they think they could be profitable as a starting point. And then, and then definitely we know, you know, the areas of the city that we want to expand in or have additional locations.
Right. Council, any other comments?
Mayor, Mayor Gatewood, I just want to acknowledge that we did have the email from Donald Childs, who sent in a public comment for this item. It has been distributed to the city council and posted on our website as well.
Go ahead, Don.
Yeah. So, a couple of things. Yeah. I, I, I'm fairly surprised that the operator isn't here considering this as a virtual meeting. So, I'm, I'm honestly leaning towards continuing this item and give the operator time to make sure that they can make the next meeting. But that being said, what I, what I would say is, I, I'm not a huge fan of the, the, this straight docking program. I mean, that's what we like, that's a five-year-old technology, in my opinion. So, I really want to understand why we would go that route. And I get that, like, this is, you know, almost as bad as hospitality right now as far as like the upheaval from a pandemic and the lack of demand for, for this product. And, you know, I want to say it was, was it Uber that gave away their entire stock of scooters to Lime? Or to, or to Jump? One of the two, I can't remember. Just to get out of the business of these things because it just wasn't, it wasn't profitable anymore. It wasn't even, not even what it was profitable. It was, it was a massive drain on their company. So, I get there's a lot of upheaval, upheaval in this, in this product and in this market. But, you, you know, and I, and I get the dock, the, the docking program keeps them from being parked on streets and in front of people's houses and ending up in people's backyards and whatever else. But if the utilization isn't there for them, what's the point? So, I, without understanding a little bit more about how they've, they've figured out how to, how to pick the right locations and this is actually going to have a demand. I get, I, I don't think I heard anything in here, you know, step correct if I'm wrong. Nobody's asking for funding from us for this, or, or, or did I miss that?
No, you're correct. They're not asking for funding. Yeah.
Okay. So, so, you know, whether it's Ollie or other things like that, you know, I don't mind being a, a guinea pig, but an exclusive market agreement for 12 months for them to treat us as a guinea pig and just use it on our properties to start with what I would argue is a fairly dated technology model as far as using only docking stations. I mean, if you, you know, pre-pandemics, all right, 18 months ago, you know, if you went to DC, like, you would look at the, the docking bikes as like a relic comparatively to what else was around. And I get, there's also a lot of annoyance of the scooters in places that you didn't want them in DC and stuff like that. But like, that, that original docking bike, non-power-assist bike was hardly ever used anymore. And, and now, four years ago, it was, but the technology's come a long way. And for us to just give exclusive rights for 12 months to something that is really a step back, I really want to understand better, what, what does their operating model look like? How is demand working in other places? Are there testimonials that we can hear? Data to show that, that it's being utilized in Hoboken and the other places that were shown there? Or those, you know, as far along as we are, right, where we're just considering this? Because, you know, this is something I was really excited about a few years ago. And yes, we got really close and the, the thing that was left out of your slide there was that the city of Sacramento decided to have a moratorium for only one operator and that's what killed everybody else in all of our other agreements. And then, low and behold, six months later, they, they lifted that and let anybody put a damn scooter in their city that, that, that wanted to operate. So, really, all the city of Sacramento did was kill all of the agreements in the surrounding communities and then they opened it up to everybody anyways. So, your, your slide presentation was much nicer than I'm going to be about that subject. But I want to make sure we do this right. And so, I'm excited that somebody wants to come here. I'm excited that they, they want to bring it. But to me, I'm not sold yet on this being something that we would tell everyone else for 12 months, we're not going to even talk to you about it. I just don't think that's, I, I don't have enough to, to, to do that. And without the operator here to answer those questions, I, I'm not ready to move forward.
David? What are you thinking?
Sorry, I had a hard time getting unmuted there. I, I appreciate what Donald just said. I, I viewed that from SECOG, the whole regional push towards scooters, and watched with extreme amusement when West Sacramento, Christopher Cabaldin, just announced at a SECOG meeting, you know, it's nice we've had this partnership attempt at the city of Sacramento, but you guys are too slow and too awkward and too micromanaging. So, we're out. We're doing it on our own. And still, the chaos, you know, came from that, that effort in the city of Sacramento to micromanage. That kept us from a scooter deal to begin with. So, I'm interested in this. I think I shared Donald's concerns or questions about it. The, the dock model, I certainly see the advantage from the operator point of view. I don't know if I see the advantage from the user point of view. Our challenge is we've got great light rail service and terrible access to the jobs that that light rail should theoretically be serving. The, the options you've got to- The, the options you've got to get across Highway 50 between light rail and jobs are very limited. And in other places where we, where we've got jobs, with the exception of someplace like Sunrise, the Sunrise Station, um, there, there just aren't, there aren't stations. You know, we need one down by the library, for example, for that pocket of jobs. So there's a lot of challenges for us as a community here that this could be a part of solving. But we have to, we have to understand how that works. So if someone lives somewhere else, say in Natomas, and they work in Rancho Cova, and they want to do transit for whatever reason, uh, then how do they get from our light rail station to their place of work? Do they have to, could they use this technology, but only if there's a, a dock on the other end? Um, that, that's sort of the challenge I'm, I'm seeing here. So I'd like to, I'd like to understand more about that. Cause obviously they're not going to pay a permanent charge for their entire day at work.
Yeah, that's right. So if you were to pick it up, um, you know, and ideally, and I would a hundred percent expect that there would be docks at the light rail stations. Um, you know, ideally there would then, you'd then take it to a dock that is at least probably within, you know, a nice comfortable thousand foot to quarter mile, 1,200 feet walk to your, to your exact business.
So I don't have quite so conservative of a perspective on it. Because, um, while I have not been in DC in two years, on the other hand, I've seen it all over the place in, uh, places like, uh, San Antonio, um, when we were there for NLC. And, um, from my perspective, uh, David, you know, there's really two answers to your question about access from light rail. The first thing obviously is the fact that this is why we have the Cordova van to begin with. And, you know, we've had that for over 10 years now. And one of our routes is the most, um, highly used of any of those neighborhood buses um, in, uh, um, that, that RT runs specifically for commute hours, not the, not the smart ride, but distinguishing that between the, uh, uh, smart ride and the commute hours. Um, um, there are some, there are some open questions. Uh, I personally appreciate the docks because I've seen, um, the red scooters at, at light rail. I mean, it's been a long time, but I, I originally saw the red scooters hanging out at light rail when they were completely outside of the service area that had been agreed on. You know, it's like somebody took it on the train and they just left it at light rail for whatever reasons. Um, so I appreciate the fact that you have to return it to a docking station that's neat and tidy and everybody knows where they are and they're not hanging out. And I think the, somebody said something about people's backyards. Um, if it were me, I would make a motion that we direct the city manager to, um, to direct staff to finalize the one-year agreement with White Fox Scooters and bring it back to city council for discussion and adoption. And I say that because if you look at the information provided about these guys, they're only on the East Coast. So this is a huge, um, leap for them and ex, and potentially expenditure um, for them to come west for the first time. And the fact that they've chosen us is very exciting. But every time I am out walking and I, the dog and I are trying to walk every afternoon now, this is kind of an age thing. It strikes me and I don't mean, I don't mean to, I do not mean that to be negative. But when I look at the people who are on our streets with their kids, nine times out of 10, the parent is actually riding a scooter. And I associate that with, you know, people who are six to 18. And yet these are young parents who grew up riding a scooter. And it would seem that that would be the market for it. And we've got a whole host of people who live here and work here within the, um, either the current limits of the area that Stefan defined or within an extended boundary from data to Kilgore. And, um, I would expect this to be very successful because of that particular demographic being actually located right here. So I would make that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second of that motion?
I second it.
All right. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Bud?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
No.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes, but when they come back, I want to, I want them at this meeting. Stefan, if they don't come back, if they're not at the meeting, we're going to have an issue.
Yeah, that's one concern. Is it like, are you, are they just throwing darts at cities and saying which cities are going to pick them up? Because they're not spending the time to be here?
Yes. So maybe they need to pick them up in their own scooters. Yes.
To clarify, my understanding of the motion is, uh, for us to work out some of the details of the contract.
Yeah.
But we won't actually execute until we provide an opportunity for the council to see the update and, uh, and the presentation by the, by the operator. Is that?
Correct.
Yeah, is that correct?
Correct.
So we will not final, ex, final execute the, the contract with, but for another presentation with the council.
Right, yeah. And, and I think moving forward too, let that be kind of a requirement that if, if somebody's presenting, if they're not here, then let's just move it to a time when it's, when they're going to be here.
Well, it sounds like staff was expecting them here.
I agree. Yeah.
So I let, no, I, I get from that standpoint. And again, I, if I, if I could clarify my no vote, I, I fully want to vote yes on this. And if it comes back and my questions are answered, I, I intend to vote yes. But I think at this point, asking staff to write up and move forward with something, it's just premature. But the point is, is we don't have the information to see if this is going to be successful. I mean, Linda, to your point, you know, you're talking about a bunch of people that are riding scooters. Those are not going to be the people that are going to ride these scooters because they have scooters, right? The point is, is who, who needs this and where are they going to utilize it? And if the only places are on city property, that means you can go from city hall to neighborhood services to the police station. That's not going to get people from light rail to VSP or from light rail to BDX or from, you know, KP International to, um, the industrial area, right?
And you're right, but you would anticipate the docking stations, as Stefan said, to be at light rail and to be at BDX.
Right, but, but our allowance will not have that. And then they have to go and have, and negotiate with every one of those property owners to get a docking station there. So, so again, that's why the, the dockless program has a hu, much higher demand for exactly what you all are talking about. It has a bunch of logistical nightmares too, and I get that.
Yeah.
But, but if, if we launch this thing with 25 scooters and six docking stations, and we say for 12 months, nobody else can come in here with a better model, then we're locking ourselves out to the better models out there that would, that would increase demand. And for one really important thing, you know, what about the folks that live in Lincoln Village and some of our other lower-income neighborhoods that would use this if they could drop it off somewhere more convenient, right? So I, I don't know. I mean, there are other models besides leaving in front of your house. You can leave it in the parking lot, you can leave it in parking spots. There's a lot of other things that you can do. I just think that this model right here and saying for 12 months, nobody else can come here, also turns off a market for us. So again, I, I'm, I'm open, I'm open to, well, hang on, hang on. Hang on. That, right. And that's why I wasn't ready to tell staff move forward. We still have more questions. So I'm looking forward to more of a conversation about this.
All right. Excellent. Stacy, why don't you get the next one ready? And let's go ahead and announce the subject for the, uh, next one.
So the next item on the regular calendar is item 19.2, update on fiscal year 2021, 2022. Community Enhancement Fund Grant Applications Received, the Legacy Fund and Internally Led Initiatives for Council Consideration.
All right. Um, Stacy, are you here? All right, go ahead, Stacy.
I am. Thank you for having me this evening, Mayor Gatewood and council. I am Stacy Delaney. And tonight I'll be presenting information about the Community Enhancement Fund. Next slide, please. So tonight is the start of the discussion, so I don't want to scare you thinking we're going to cover, you know, $10 million worth of projects and programs in one night. It's really a process in which is going to start tonight. I'm going to share some basic information about the current fiscal year, what the proposed budget looks like for next fiscal year. We're going to look at the department initiatives tonight. Um, the general legacy fund allocation, but we're not going to dive into the individual projects. And we're going to save the grant applications starting April 19th. Um, I'm not looking for any formal decisions from you tonight. This is really an opportunity to lay some of the initial groundwork so that decisions can be made by May 17th. Um, at the end of tonight, we'll be in a better position to look forward to that April 19th meeting where we start the discussions on the community grants, followed by the meetings on May 3rd and May 17th. And the goal is to adopt the Community Enhancement Fund budget concurrent with the city's budget. So that will take place in the early June timeframe. One important thing to note is in tonight's council packet, all of the grant applications are part of that package. I think there's 682 pages of grant applications, which is one reason we're making this information available tonight. Um, wouldn't expect that anyone would be able to read all of that over one weekend. And again, we'll start sharing those recommendations on April 19th, but no decisions until May 17th. Next slide, please. This is somewhat even hard for me to believe, but this was actually the seventh year that we accepted community grant applications. So we started the Community Enhancement Fund Grant Process back in 2015. Um, since we're still in 2020, 21, it's hard to believe, but it is the seventh time we've done this. So I'm looking forward to sharing those recommendations with you soon. But we're not going to dive right into those grant applications tonight. So next slide, please. Um, again, to build on that foundation, during the current fiscal year that we're in, the original budget was $7.2 million. That budget was conservative compared to some of the prior year's budgets because we were right in the midst of COVID and we weren't sure exactly, um, what the impact would be. Um, we actually revised the budget just recently. You adopted that new budget of $9.5 million with most of the additional funding going towards the youth center project. Uh, when we look forward to this upcoming fiscal year, we're basing the budget on $10 million. So that's what we're going to use for the estimated budget going forward. Next slide, please. Um, the pie chart on the screen is meant to just illustrate how the current fiscal year funding has been allocated. Um, you'll notice that the legacy fund is quite large this year. But again, that's largely due to the fact that we had additional funding and that was allocated towards the legacy fund, um, specifically towards the youth center project. Um, I'm going to move forward to the next slide so that you can look at what the tentative budget looks like, um, in fiscal year 21, 22. Um, as you're looking at that slide, you're going to notice that many of the pie pieces are essentially the same or within one or two percentage points. So if we're looking at the yellow pie piece that represents community grants, that happens to be the same as last fiscal year. Um, public safety is also the same at 17%. Community and economic development is slightly higher and I'll go into why that is in this upcoming budget. Um, public works look similar within one or two percentage points. And of course, the administration and communications of the fund is 5%. Um, the legacy fund is roughly going to be 30%. That's down a little from the current fiscal year. But again, you remember there was the, the amended budget of an additional $2 million, which is why the current fiscal year was slightly higher in that category. Next slide, please. Um, so this is just to illustrate the same information you saw on the prior two pie charts, but just in numerical, um, or table format. So you're going to notice on this pie chart that, um, we're estimating roughly the same in community grants. The main difference being, um, we're using it based upon a $10 million budget instead of a $9.5 million budget. Um, I'm going to dive into each of the sections, including public safety, public works, and community development and economic development in just a moment. Um, we're not going to be discussing the legacy project allocations tonight other than just the general placeholder that's shown on the screen. Um, that will be part of a future discussion as well. And then like I've stated earlier, the administration of the fund is set at 5%. So you'll see based upon a $10 million, it's $500,000. And I'm going to go ahead and start with public safety next. So next slide, please. Um, you'll see on the screen, these are the main projects that will be covered under the Community Enhancement Fund proposed in fiscal year 21, 22. Um, this is a continuation of the Crime Suppression Unit. It's also a continuation of the Folsom Olsen Zimmedel Officer, which is a pop officer assigned to the Foz area. Um, there is one change on this slide compared to previous years, which is, uh, rather than having the K9 SRO shown on this, um, Community Enhancement Fund budget, it's been reclassified and it's now a youth center officer that will be assigned to the youth center going forward, as well as the existing programs that we've been participating in, such as the Holiday Star Program and some other youth outreach and award programs. So this budget represents 17% of the proposed budget and that is the same percent allocation as the current fiscal year. Next slide, please. So this represents the Public Works Proposed Budget for fiscal year 21, 22. This also looks very similar to prior year's budget. Your, this budget also assumes that we're going to keep the enhanced litter and graffiti abatement program, the enhanced city's urban forest program, and it's also going to include funding for the replacement of sidewalks. This would be for existing sidewalks as well as pavement rehabilitation. So this budget represents 13% of the Community Enhancement Fund, which is about 2% higher than the prior fiscal year's budget. Next slide, please. This slide represents kind of the combined community and economic development projects and initiatives under the Community Enhancement Fund that are also proposed for fiscal year 21, 22. Um, this budget assumes the continuation of several different economic development initiatives, such as the sign and facade program, the jobs and talent program. Um, it also includes funding for city banner placemaking and branding projects. Um, some ongoing economic development initiatives, such as the market feasibility analysis that we might do or some of those other things related to the business park. Um, the main change in this year's budget, which is why it's higher than prior years, is that this budget assumes the ongoing in startup costs associated with the Rancho Cova Youth Center. So this would be specifically related to operations, not maintenance. Um, it also has the continuation of the Neighborhood Services Nuisance Property Abatement Program and some community building outreach and community service activities that are largely tied to community engagement. So this budget represents roughly 15% of the Community Enhancement Fund. And that is about five percentage points higher than the prior fiscal year. But again, that's largely related to the anticipated startup costs and operation costs for the youth center. Next slide, please. And as we look forward to those future meetings later in April and in May, I want to take an opportunity just to share with you kind of how the application recommendation process is going to work and when to expect, um, those upcoming meetings. Next slide, please. So during the latest, um, Community Enhancement Fund Grant Application Period, um, which was from February 8th to March 19th, we received 82 grant applications. That's very similar to prior fiscal years. That's very similar to prior fiscal years. Last fiscal year, as an example, we received 83. The total of the 82 grant applications that we received is roughly $5.3 million, and we anticipate recommending about $2 million in projects for council consideration. I can't tell you that exact amount yet because we're still in the process of reviewing as a committee and formulating those recommendations. And the first time those recommendations will be shared is the next city council meeting, which will be on April 19th. Next slide, please. So after tonight's meeting, I'll be coming back April 19th. That will be the first iteration of sharing community grants and those recommendations with you. We don't have to cover everything in one night, so we don't need to cover all 82. We have the opportunity to meet again on May 3rd to continue those discussions, and again, on May 17th if needed. We do need those preliminary budget decisions made by May 17th so that everything can be ready and adopted as part of the city's budget process in June. So that's kind of what the timeline looks like over the next several council meetings in months, and I'm happy to pause here in case you have any questions or comments for me. If not, I will be back on April 19th when we really take a deep dive into those 82 grant applications.
Siri, go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stacy, my question was for 2020, there must have been applications which they could not have come to fruition because of COVID. Are those rolling over? What's happening with those grants?
Sure. So we really take them the approach to be as flexible as possible with our existing grant applications, so long as the grant applicant or recipient had a plan in place to move forward. So if anybody has asked for a grant application extension, or I should say, a contract extension, we've been able to work with them on a case-by-case basis to either extend their grant terms or modify them in some way. So in some cases, we had people not apply this year because instead they just asked us, well, can you extend my contract by six months or a year so that I can finish due to my COVID restrictions that were in place? So we are doing it on a case-by-case basis and working with those grant recipients so that they do have the opportunity to complete the project.
So Stacy, I know it's a real fluid process. Are you also the one that's running the other grant measure? And then, are we trying to coincide that money together, or is that something separate that's going to go with the other one? Are we going to split it up? Do you know?
It's my understanding that the next time you hear about Measure R will be at the May Budget Work Session. Cyrus can correct me if that's wrong, but that's my understanding.
Yes. Yes, I think we have received broad direction from the city council, and based on the direction that we received at the work sessions, the two work sessions that we held in February and January, we would be presenting up an expenditure plan for the May Budget Workshop.
I ask that because I'm trying to see how much money is going into economic development and the place programs, and I want to know if this money needs to go along with that, or that's mostly the Measure R money that's coming in. So should we, you know, because we're going to, it's going to be like $2 million to economic development, then, you know, I'm trying to make sure I add it right, so.
Sure. Sure, we will give you, that's a great question, Mayor. We will provide you with that high-level summary so you have that information.
And we can, and so, I'm sorry, just so we can have that when I look at this grant program as well, if I could, just to be like, okay, so expect about this with this money, you know, because it's all coming at different times.
That's a great suggestion.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think, you know, part of the reason why we structured the economic development section a little bit more, kind of continuing to focus on the incentive programs, a lot of the kind of programmatic stuff that we've talked about is really looking at Measure R. And so really tried to focus the CEF discussion with the continuing the programs that we were doing around our incentive packages. So that's kind of how we've kind of split those up in a way, and we could provide that kind of high level where those buckets fall into for the different economic development programs.
Okay, great. Siri, this will be your first time. It's a big argument for about four times, yelling, screaming, a lot of muting people on Zoom. It's going to be good. It's going to be a good experience for you, I promise.
All for the good of mankind.
Yes, exactly. Donald, Linda, Siri, anything? I mean, Donald, Linda, wow, David.
Yeah, Garrett, I had a couple of questions and comments. So the first thing, Cyrus, I don't mind building in startup costs for the youth center. Obviously, you don't have anything here for the civic center, but I want to have a more broad conversation about out years, about where we get operating funds like that. We've been pretty clear that we don't want a bunch of long-term commitments made out of these tax measures without some sort of direction, and I don't recall ever saying that this is where that was coming from. So I was just kind of parking lot that conversation, and if that's the next visioning session, I think for this year, that makes total sense. It's going to open, you need the money from somewhere to start it, and we're going to have to pay people, that's fine. But I'm not sold that this is, that the ongoing operations of this wouldn't be out of the general fund, especially if we're looking at, you know, a general fund that continues to grow, that we wouldn't incorporate this into there. So I want to, at least have somebody make a note that that's something that we should be discussing as a council, and make sure that a majority of us believe, you know, Measure H should be paying for that, or somewhere else should be paying for that. What was the other thing I was going to say? Oh, Stacy, between now and the next time that we talk about this, are we expecting superintendents to have weighed in and ranked the school-related grants by then?
Yes, I've actually received all the feedback, so we will have that incorporated into the recommendation.
Great, yeah, because it looks like there's an explosion of applications this year, not just in the number, but in the, the dollar amounts are way bigger this year than they've been in the past. I don't know, maybe I'll just go on record and remind folks that Measure R was different than Measure H, and we didn't double Measure H. There was actually a point and a focus to Measure R that is different than this. So that people think that we just doubled our money for these grants, we didn't do that, or at least a majority of the council said that that wasn't going to be the intent of Measure R. But yeah, but I, whether, Cyrus, I would just say, you know, whether it's the youth center or at some point talking about the ongoing operational costs of a civic center, we really probably need to talk a little bit further about where that money comes from ongoing, because I'm not sold it would be coming from here. But I think that's pretty much it. The only other thing I would also say is I found it a little strange that the youth center was in the economic development bucket, and so we also might want to think about, and I, well, I guess it says economic development, and then below it's an economic development, community development, but yeah, we might, one, you might want to kind of change that wording, but also I think it might be the who of us at some point to maybe make that its own department. Maybe it's still under MICA in some way, but just, we're starting to build out something that just doesn't exist. Cyrus, I think you and I talked about this today, right? I mean, we're getting into the business of running a youth center, we're going to get into the business of running a civic center that may have a youth component and a healthcare component and a lot of other things as a part of it. I think we're getting to the point where that thing has its own name, you know what I mean? So something to think about. So that's it for me.
David, do you have anything?
I guess my comments would be similar. You know, obviously, we've got a weird year here with some heldover funds from last year, I should say, unexpected revenues, and probably a bunch of projects that couldn't be completed. So that's going to, that's going to make this an unusual year, maybe help us lean a little towards legacy projects, I'm not, I'm not sure funding-wise. And then I would like to echo Donald's comments on Measure R. That did not mean there'd be a massive increase in, in funding of these sorts of things. So I do recognize a lot of need out there, and I really love to hear particularly sort of organic Rancher Cordova community ideas, as opposed to someone coming here hoping to shop their program from, from somewhere else. But I look forward to seeing what staff comes up with, and as usual, Stacy, good work on this. This is a more than a handful, this particular, particular challenge.
Cyrus, can I get the big giant folder, though?
Absolutely.
I enjoy, I enjoy going, I enjoy using that to hold doors open, possibly start my car.
We'll give you two copies of it.
Excellent, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, make a comment. So the discussion on April 19th, as Stacy pointed out, would be very robust, and we wanted to dedicate a good part of our next council meeting to this discussion, and at least going through the lion's share of the applications. So we will set aside a good amount of time and try to keep the agenda light otherwise.
So we may, Donald might be running the meeting on that day, so just FYI, because I have people in my family that are going to get their second COVID shot, and it was a rough, it was a rough trip on the first one. So just be prepared that Donald will be on, on full regale at that time. So at this point, let's go on to 19.3.
Wait a minute, Garrett, 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 so I have a request similar to your comment. Stacy, and I'm sorry, I didn't check the staff and attached to your staff report.
You have to, go ahead and say what you're saying. Say it again.
Okay, so just a question, whether, whether the full 82 applications are attached to this staff report?
Yes, they are.
Great, okay, thank you.
As well as the framework, which is the summary document. The only thing not on the summary document at this point is the staff recommendation, so that part will be updated for the April 19th meeting.
Super. I'm just looking at being out most of next week, and it's something I can take with me and review at that point. Thank you.
Yes. And if you do prefer a hard copy, we can make you one, but right now it's available, you know, through your agenda packet electronically.
Did you do a matrix again?
Yes, we did.
If it's not attached to the agenda, if I could have a copy of that, that would be great.
It is attached to the agenda as well.
Okay, super, thank you.
Great, all right. Thank you, guys. All right, Stacy, go ahead and get 19.3 ready, and if you would go ahead and announce the subject for, first, next, next item.
Yes, 19.3 is the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan update and discussion.
Darcy, go ahead and tell why the vice chair and the chair know how great this group is running.
Good evening, Mayor Gatewood, members of the council. This group is running great. I observed their previous meetings just two weeks ago.
Excellent, meeting adjourned? So we're going to go, oh, what, we still?
We were pretty, we were pretty. Next slide, please. The purpose of tonight's meeting is just to give a real quick overview of the SS HCP, which is the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, and the current challenges that we're facing as a city, as well as some of our plan partners are facing when it comes to infill projects. And then, I'll let you know some of the first steps that we're taking to address this, and then just looking for any council feedback or support to move forward, and work with our plan partners, resource agencies, and our SSCA, which is our South Sacramento Conservation Agency Executive Director. Next slide, please. Very brief background, the SS HCP was adopted in October of 2018. Since then, we have received nine applications and issued two. The first application being for Phase 1 of the ranch project, which put about $1.4 million into the pot of mitigation fees. The second one being one that we just issued for a smaller infill piece, which will put a few hundred thousand dollars into that pot of mediation fees. Next slide, please. Some of the challenges that we're facing with infill, again, some of our plan partners are having very similar issues, such as the city of Galt, is the complex permit process. So when we're looking at infill projects, we're looking at our much smaller parcels that lie within our city boundaries south of 50. Any property north of 50 is not within the boundary of the SS HCP, so we're not talking about parcels that would be along Folsom Boulevard. We're talking about some of our smaller pieces that you'll find in our, along Sunrise Boulevard, smaller pieces that you may see scattered throughout our office park area that will face, that are facing or that will face some challenges. So when I'm talking about what is this complex permit process, is when we're dealing with much larger projects, like our bigger residential subdivisions, generally, they're hiring biologists, they have the resources to go through the whole process. It's a lot more complex, but a little bit more streamlined and easier for them to understand. With the smaller infill pieces, you know, they may have just a couple acres, but they could have a very small weather feature like a vernal pool or a wetland. And then that puts them into a whole different category of having to go through the process to get permits through Army Corps. Generally, these folks are much smaller developers, they don't understand the process, maybe they don't have the resources and the means to hire a biologist to help them. So what we've been trying to do is utilize our biologists to help them walk through the process. We're very fortunate to have great consultants that are helping us that have been able to help some of our smaller infill developers. The other issue that we're hearing of is just the cost of mitigation fees. So our HCPs are generally set up in terms of mitigation fees on two different methods, one being a weighted average, and that's what our HCP is based on, the other being fees that are set up by zone or location. So we don't have the zone location, but that could potentially be a solution for some of our infill projects. The one thing that we have to be very careful with when we're looking at making changes is that we're not compromising any of our permits that have been issued as a planned hole by our, by our resource agencies. We can't be specific to Ranch of Cordova, we have to be specific to the entire plan boundary. That includes Sacramento County, city of Galt. The other thing is that we need to try to keep whatever changes we do at a minor amendment level versus a major amendment level. Next slide, please. So at the last JPA meeting, I just gave a very brief overview, like I'm doing tonight, of what the concerns are that we're having. I've spoken to the executive director, and we're scheduling a plan partners meeting to start having a conversation about what are the issues that we're facing with infill projects, and how can we overcome these challenges to make the process a little bit easier. We'll then bring our resource agencies into that discussion, and I believe we've committed to go back to the JPA at their May meeting with some solutions to these problems. So with that, that concludes my update, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Garrett, I had a quick question. I think besides Siri, I'm the only one that's dodged the bullet and never having to go to one of these meetings. But I, is there a map of the area that you're talking about? Because I was kind of befuddled in the fact that I thought all we were talking about with this was green fill. So how big is the area that we're talking about?
The area is, is rather large, so it's pretty much everything south of 50 to, so that would be the northern boundary of the planned area, east, all the way to our city limits on the east, our city limits on the west, and our city limits to the south. So the easiest way to explain it is everything north of 50 is outside the planned boundaries.
But everything else inside of 50.
But also, it doesn't, it doesn't include the city of Folsom.
No.
So it's really quite, hopefully, it's really quite.
I I remember Folsom was doing their own, yeah, they were doing, uh, the federal, not the federal, but the state, whatever it was or something.
El Grove also pulled out, right?
Yes, and El Grove pulled out.
Well, El Grove only pulled out because the only thing that was in it was going to be land they tried to annex.
Yeah, and if I could also clarify, uh, Rio del Oro is not within the boundaries, and Westboro is not, both of those opted to be outside of the boundaries. Um, at the time, they were moving, well, Westboro was also, but moving ahead of the process. So those are the other two areas that were not.
Well, they already have their four oh four or whatever, right? So they didn't need this.
Yeah, they do. They could opt to, which we have had, um, projects that are already approved that have their four oh four permits. They could opt to dedicate under the HCP. It's a different process, but we're doing it with, um, our Sun Creek project and Arista del Sol.
Okay, yeah, no, see, I I don't know why I always thought that this was a green fill solution, um, for them, but but I I guess I I wasn't aware that this this was affecting that much of the rest of the city. Um, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I I had no anticipation this would impact everything in in Rancho Cordova, south of Highway fifty. That was, that's pretty much a shock to me. Um,
Not sure I would have supported funding it.
Exactly, I I I may very well have flipped my opinion on the whole deal had I realized that. So now I think we're really behind the eight ball because we've got projects that have been hanging out for a year, um, not knowing what their fees are. And it's it's just an unknown. I mean, they don't know if it's five hundred dollars or five hundred thousand dollars. They they don't know. Um, and I'm I'm not sure I'm seeing a quick route to to what that answer is here. And frankly, you know, from my point of view, that's kind of unacceptable for us in Rancho Cordova. This is not how we should be operating with partners who are making investments in our city. We should be, uh, proactive and as helpful as possible, not sort of being on the sidelines for a year while they while they hang in the wind, um, without any without any kind of guidance or just or just being told to, you know, guess what their fee amount is. Um, so I don't know. I don't know how many projects are stuck in this, but it seems like anything we want to do south of fifty is is being impacted by impacted by this. And I I can't see us staying there longer. So, you know, uh, staff, whatever we've got to do to get this thing wrapped up, my goodness, you know, should have been done before it opened, let alone now.
Who is the specific partner you're worried about, David?
Yeah, David, I have to tell you that the board doesn't know anything about this, okay? Um, and so, uh, Darcy, if there's a list of projects that need, um, need some assistance at the board, I mean, I truly wouldn't, you know, the project changed. The whole HCP changed so much over the twenty-five years that it was in process. That's probably not a surprise, but it really did. And so, um, um, basically, we are all handed this document, and we don't get very hands-on unless something happens, as has happened over the last couple of, uh, months. And I have really gotten involved in, uh, a couple of very specific projects as the as the chair. I've gotten really involved just because we have a, um, we have an executive director who really needs some support. And so if there is a list of the kinds of things that David is talking about and, um, and the board members could see that, then Kim ought to know that.
So we do have, um, out of the nine that we have, two of those are infill. Um, those two are are both owned by the same property owner, and we have issued one of their, um, well, I'll call it very, it's not very complex. And I will say that this property owner hasn't, um, raised concerns really in terms of the actual fee that they have to pay. We do have a fee calculator, and we punch in the acreage, and it generates what that that fee amount is that's owed. It was really more of the process and just getting through it. One property was much easier than the other, and and the other that had some complexities to it is unfortunately midway through the project, there was, um, legislation that came down from the presidential office that took away jurisdiction from Army Corps on smaller wetlands. And then they fell in this limbo area where we weren't quite sure, and we were we were coordinating with Army Corps on what the process was. It was very unfortunate that it happened to them midway through the process that we had to kind of figure out who had jurisdiction and what the process was. Um, we got that all sorted out, and so, again, our biologist is helping their biologist through the process. We're almost done with that one as well. So the two infill projects that we do have, one has been issued and one is very close to being issued. Um, the other ones that we have are are larger scale residential subdivisions that, um, are making their way through the process without any any issues. But it will happen again. It will come up again with our smaller infill, which is why we brought this to the attention of the JPA and the executive director. Um, I have been in contact with the community development director at the city of Galt. They're having, um, a lot more issues than we are, as they're a much smaller city with a lot more infill. But we're both on the same page of needing to get this resolved as soon as possible.
Okay, excellent. Well, remember, you have the full support of two of the board members that sit on that council. So if there's any changes or stuff we can do to make this process better, let's 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 do what we can. All right.
Thank you.
Um, let's move on to number twenty, future requests for agenda items. Um, so I have I I have two, and I want to see if we, um, have a quorum. So the first one is, um, uh, do we want, do we have three people that are interested in talking about creating some sort of legislation for signs dealing with realtors, uh, not realtors as in houses, but, um,
Commercial real estate.
Yeah, the, uh, commercial real estate.
Absolutely. David and I, David and I have have worked on this problem for years, and quite frankly, some of our developers have provided a solution, but, um, but we haven't done anything about it.
Siri, are you interested?
I don't know much about this. Not on the top of my radar.
Garrett, I I assume what you're talking about are are some properties with some space for lease or maybe no space for lease, and multiple broker signs sort of lining the the edges of the property?
Absolutely. Looks like everything in Rancho Cordova is for sale.
Is that is that their concern, Garrett, the true?
Yeah, we need, I need to get, so I need to get three council members that want to do it, that want to talk about it. Because I only I only, we can't count to three, and we need to, uh, we need to spend some some resource on it.
You're here. We're here.
I got two. Siri?
Yeah.
Who's this, who's your third, Linda?
Garrett.
There you go. But Siri said yes. Did you say yes, Siri?
I don't have enough information about this, unfortunately, to say yes or no, but we'll bring it on a, as long as we can bring it on a day where we're low on agenda, then yes.
Okay, there's my three. So my second thing is I want to talk about, um, when can we come back to council? Uh, I think it's time for us to go back into office, and I feel like our constituents want to see us and be able to come back. I mean, Zoom's been great, and but I do think it's time that we all go back. I'm pretty sure most, uh, people on our council have gotten the COVID vaccine or are going to go get the COVID vaccine that are concerned about the COVID, uh, uh, virus, COVID nineteen. And I think it's time that we open back up. So I'm hoping that you guys.
Wait, I love Zoom. What part of Zoom do I not like? Now we have a Zoom bingo.
Yeah, I I can't, I can't do another Zoom meeting. Um, so how are we feeling as a group? Is it is it time? Do you think like maybe next month would be enough time to, May, May first? Or that May, we can start to go back into council sessions? Because we're all either vaccinated up or feel comfortable meeting with the, going back to having everyone back in a room together? Because we all, we don't have to do social distancing anymore because we'll all be vaccinated? How are we feeling about this, guys?
Well, I think we probably need everybody on the screen that I'm looking at right now to be, uh, you know, a couple of weeks post-vaccination. And then we need to think carefully about, um, you know, whether we or how we deal with the public in that situation. Um, and it's not so much at that point the public and us, if we're all vaccinated on the screen I'm looking at, but the public with each other. You know, if we open up a a public venue, how do we sort of like protect them from, uh, from each other?
Do they have to get their double lock and they have a card?
Could I make the suggestion that I I think that this this, you know, falls to some extent in in the gap between a substantive decision and and a scheduling decision? Because it's it's really not just about when you do it, but how you do it and and that sort of thing. Um, would you like to just see if the council would all like to agendize this as a discussion item for the next meeting to to figure out the particulars? And have maybe even the city manager's office come back with some updates or information or that sort of thing to tee it up?
Yeah, please.
And I like. Public health guidance.
Yeah, what we're allowed to do, how soon can we come back? I miss seeing everybody. I miss seeing Linda's face. I see you on Zoom, but, you know, I miss seeing the the group. So let's get what, I I think we got three people that are interested in it. I just want to know timelines, you know.
Well, Garrett, again, this, the, the, and I think that's what Adam was trying to make the clarification. This isn't an agenda item that you're asking for.
Can I put it on the agenda?
Well, no, no, hang on, hang on. So I think the point is that, one, is it, it, I think David described it well. Just because some of us, like for me, would be, well, it would be later than what you just said. Uh, but it's not just us, and it's not just about what we want to have happen. It's about what is the appropriate thing to do and what kind of guidance we're getting from our 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 health officers and and the health department at the county. So I I would be honest with you, uh, the the question you're asking is beyond, well, maybe David here, but the rest of our pay grade. Um, this is not our expertise, and just because we want to do something doesn't mean it's appropriate. So I think asking the more questions.
I am saying I'd like to agendize it so we can talk about it.
I understand. What I'm saying is is that we are not the experts to make this decision. We should be looking towards the experts to give us recommendations as to what to do. Go.
In addition, in addition, this is, that would be a very heavy burden on staff. So you really have to give staff time to thoroughly research this. And if we're gonna all sit there with masks on and and mumble at each other, you know, I don't see that as a productive meeting. We do enough mumbling on Zoom as it is. I don't.
I agree with you.
Productive.
So I guess my suggestion is, i- is.
And not next meeting, because obviously, next meeting, as Stacy has just said, is going to be devoted to, uh, to talking about, um, all the applications, all right? So until we get past the application discussion and the budget discussion, which looked like it was going to consume at least the next three meetings, then adding a bunch of other stuff to the agenda is probably not a good idea.
Yeah. Well, and and also, just to accommodate those individuals, there there's probably no way po, there's not, there's not a way possible for those people to be able to come to the meeting. So i- in a sense, what we're doing is we're going to come to a meeting where the entire public has to do Zoom. Um, and I and I just think, I mean, honestly, I I I really agree with Linda that, you know, right now, sitting in a meeting, I mean, this is taking three hours a day, three hours of a of an intense meeting with a mask on.
Three hours?
Not exactly my idea way of.
You're counting wrong, Donald. How is it, three hours? Were you starting from five?
The running meeting that I'm on right now, and that doesn't include closed session. It says two hours and fifty-two minutes. I haven't dropped once during this meeting. I don't know if you guys have, but it says two hours and fifty-two minutes and thirty-eight seconds right now.
No, we meant four hours.
So so let me see, because I'm only allowed to agendize. Do you guys want to talk about this? Or do we not even want to broach it for the next?
But but hold, hold on, that brings up a good point. We, as city council, uh, that's a whole different discussion. But initially, we had the city hall open for folks that could come in. Um, so maybe that's a point that, um, we can think about, given that people, because Stacy is in the room.
Yeah, well, Siri, again, in the next meeting, you have eighty-two organizations that submitted grants that might.
Oh, I see what you're saying, Donald.
You can't, like, we can't accommodate five people from every grant team that wants to come and do public comment. Like, we can't, like, we don't even want that many people.
Hey, Adam, are we allowed to talk like this? Or do we have to stop and say we agendized?
I think this is, this is probably.
I think this is something that Stacy and Cyrus should research and bring us their recommendation.
I, yeah, I I think the question that you started to ask, Mayor, is appropriate is is does the council want to talk about this subject at a future meeting or or not yet even make that decision? But I I don't think that expressing your opinions on the substance of the issue at any greater length is advantageous right now. It's just kind of a, do you want to talk about this?
Okay. Do I have three votes, people, that want to talk about it, guys? No?
Not yet for me.
No, no. Okay, cool.
Mayor, Mayor Gatewood, I'd just like to interject. Um, we have a couple of hands. We skipped public comment for the last couple of regular calendar items, and I think we need to allow them to speak.
Yes, we do. Excuse us.
That's okay.
All right.
Um, Austin, Alan, I'm going to unmute you and.
Stacy, before you do that, can I just double check?
Sure.
Cyrus, do you have any other?
No, no, I think, I think I heard, I I I did hear from the council that there's no interest to discuss it at this point.
All right, Stacy, go ahead. Announce the subject and then tell them which one they're talking about.
Um, Austin, Alan, if you're there, if you could introduce yourself and let us know which item you're speaking on, nine point, nineteen point two or nineteen point three.
Austin, if you're talking, you're on mute.
I I don't wish to speak. I accidentally hit the raise hand button. I'm very sorry.
Oh, no. All right, thank you.
Well, welcome to our meeting anyway.
Thank you, Austin.
Thanks for staying with us.
We appreciate you.
That was all. Thank you very much. Oh.
Was that it?
Donald Childs had his nineteen point one. We already addressed that one. Yeah, we're good.
Yeah.
So I didn't do anything wrong. Yes, I like when I'm right. Thank you, Stacy. All right, and at that note, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.